Let's go ahead. We're going to go ahead and get started if that's okay. And you'll be on in just a few moments after we take care of some of the preliminary matters. Delegate Simon is here also by video.
Hey, Dick.
Hey, how are you doing, Marcus?
Very good.
All right, are the TV cameras ready and we're ready to go live, Celeste?
I'll confirm, yes.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
I will mute everybody in a moment, except for the mayor.
You might want to do that after I start talking, Celeste, so. All right, so let's go ahead and get started. I want to welcome everyone to the Monday, October 26, 2020 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. I apologize for the delay in getting started. We had some technical difficulties, but we're happy those seem to be resolved. And we do have Senator Sasslaw and Delegate Simon with us now as well. So we're happy you all are joining us this evening. Before we get started, we do have a few preliminary matters to take care of. And so I'm going to ask either the clerk or assistant city manager to read the notice, the statutory notice before we get started.
I'll do that. Thank you, Mayor. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, this meeting has been posted and is being held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of city council are present through electronic means, and members of the public can view the meeting at www.fallschurchva.gov/councilmeetings and on Falls Church Cable TV, Cox Channel 11, RCN 2, and Verizon Channel 35. Public comments are accepted virtually, and those who sign up will speak via the meeting video platform. The public can go to fallschurchva.gov-publiccomment before noon on the day of the council meeting to sign up to speak. Written public comments, including those regarding public hearing items sent in advance of the meeting will be accepted at cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov until noon on the day of the meeting. These comments will be sent to city council daily and summarized and presented during the written comments agenda item. Comments received after noon on the day of the meeting will be forwarded to city council and summarized at the next regular meeting.
All right, will you now call roll, Madam Clerk?
I will. Vice Mayor Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes, I'm here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. And as I alluded earlier, we are delighted to have a special treat with us this evening to having Senator Sasslaw and Delegate Simon with us, who we'll hear from in just a moment. Before we get to that, though, I would ask that you all please rise and face a flag. Maybe you have one in your home. If not, there's one on the screen now. But please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all for that. And our first order of business is something that's very special to us and I think special to the folks in Richmond as well, which is remembrance of our dear colleague Dan Z. And we've had some discussion of that, and we will have a more formal celebration of his life and many accomplishments in the spring. But in the meantime, our state delegation wanted to join us this evening to help share memories and their appreciation of the great work Dan has done, not just for the city of Falls Church, but through the region and the Commonwealth as well. And so we are joined tonight by Senator Sasslaw and Delegate Simon, who have a resolution that passed in the state legislature, and they may have some additional thoughts as well. And I don't know how you all would like to share this or start this, Senator Sasslaw and Delegate Simon. Senator Sasslaw, do you have any thoughts? There's a proclamation.
You know, I just wanted the General Assembly and the Senate to express their appreciation for the contribution made by Councilman Z, not only to Falls Church, but to Northern Virginia and the country at large. And I also want to thank his wife Elizabeth for participating with this. It was a great honor to know him. Interestingly enough, I first met him going door to door about a year and a half ago. And he's just a super impressive individual. He was. And he's going to be greatly missed. But I thought it was important for the General Assembly to show their appreciation for his service to his community and to his country.
Thank you, Senator Sasslaw. Delegate Simon, did you have?
Yeah, I agree with everything that Senator Sasslaw said. I think Cindy Meister is holding up framed copies that will be presented to the Z family. You've got one from the House of Delegates and one from the State Senate, and they're both, they're identical. And it was really sort of a little shocking, I think, to get the word when we're in the middle of our special session about Dan's passing. I met Dan on the campaign trail as well. He was running for his second stint on the city council in 2013, which was my first time running for elected office. And so we ran together. We were on the same ticket, as it were. I think it was one of the first November elections for the city of Falls Church as well. So it was new to everybody, and you couldn't have asked for a warmer, more welcoming person. He was, his second time around, he was the campaign pro. He knew Falls Church, was so happy to share everything that he knew with me about campaigning, about the city, about environmental policy and issues that the city of Falls were important to Falls Churchers so that I would be up to speed with everyone. So we did, if we were there in person, I'd probably read these to somebody, but it doesn't translate, I think, as well in the Zoom format. But know that it's a great resolution that warmly remembers Dan and recounts some of his major accomplishments, as Senator Sasslaw said, both nationally and at the local level in Falls Church. And this will be a small part of his legacy, and this will contribute something to his memory. But Dan was really remarkable, and I think he really created his own legacy in the city of Falls Church. And he will be remembered far beyond whatever wherethas and recitals we could come up with in any resolution. And his legacy will be remembered by everyone who attends the new high school in Falls Church because of the fact that it's going to be so LEED certified. I was talking to the school board chair, Lawrence Webb, and your superintendent about the gold LEED certified school. They're going to create a special wall and a section there dedicated to Dan and his environmental awareness. So the least we could do is recount some of that and get it into the record of the General Assembly and into the journals of the House and the Senate and create a little something for Elizabeth to have and the family to have to remember. But I think the whole city of Falls Church will remember Dan and his legacy for a long time. And he's done what I think a lot of us that go into public service are aimed for, right? You want to leave, whatever jurisdiction you serve, and you want to leave it better than it was when you got there. And I think Dan succeeded certainly in the city of Falls Church. And so I was happy to just document some of that and have it remembered in a resolution in the House of Delegates.
All right, we thank you both for that. It's well said. And Dan is a very special person for us here in Falls Church, and we're delighted to hear that his impact reached much beyond the boundaries of Falls Church, but throughout the whole state. We knew he was special, and we're glad to hear that the rest of the state feels the same way as well. And as I mentioned earlier, we plan on having a greater celebration of his life and accomplishments in the spring. And so we hope you'll join us and come back for that as well when those plans are formalized. And we also hope that you both will stick around for a few minutes because we'd like to have a legislative briefing and update. We know there's a lot been going on in Richmond. And so if you'll bear with us for just a few minutes, we'll get back to you and hear more about what's happening in Richmond and how Falls Church might be served as well by some of your efforts. So thank you for that, and let's move on, if we can, now to the summary of written comments. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Andrew Acker from Arlington asked that the, these are Broad and Washington, the Inside Project. These are comments on that project. Andrew Acker of Arlington asked that the project be designed as not to impede the business of Claire and Don's Beach Shack. Lee Barnes of 407 Jackson Street opposed the project. Laura Brady of 507 Hillwood Avenue supported the Whole Foods project. Claire Earth of 6808 Jefferson Avenue supported the project and asked if the open lot at Annandale and Jefferson had been considered as a location. Paige Halper opposed the project and the sale of the city-owned parking lot. Elizabeth Anne Shawn, 1314 Robinson Place, opposed the project. And Diane Zanetti of 908 Lincoln Avenue opposed the project. On stormwater, the Environmental Sustainability Council provided comments on stormwater management plans. Elizabeth Killingsworth of 312 Shadow Walk asked that stormwater management projects that impact homes be funded. She provided information about flooding at her home. Dave Gustafson, Chair of the Stormwater Task Force, provided comments about the most effective way to make stormwater improvements. Regarding the proposed Washington gas easement, John Murphy of 308 Chestnut Street forwarded legal questions regarding the proposed easement. And for traffic calming, John Transu of 303 Parker Avenue wrote in opposition to using bump outs as a traffic calming solution. And that was it.
All right, thank you very much. Let's move back to our legislative group on the legislative briefing. So we hope that you all can tell us a little bit about what's happened in these past months. We know there's a lot going on in Richmond and throughout the state. But Delegate Simon and Senator Sasslaw, we'll turn it back over to you for legislative update.
Okay. I thought I'd leave some of the criminal justice work to the lawyer amongst us, which is Marcus. But anyway, the area where, you know, most local governments are affected are what we did in K through 12. And if you remember, we unalotted almost $400 million back in, I guess it was in April. And we put 79.7 million back. And that, 37.3 million is to expand early childhood education for three- and four-year-olds, which is important. Restores that, restores 35 million to support at-risk students, and 6 million more for meals. In addition to that, local governments will get their share of $95 million of non-general fund money from these gray machines for COVID relief payments. And the purpose of that is, as you all know, the sales tax has taken a hit, and that's a good part of your budget, particularly on a local level. And this will help make up for that. There's also about $220 million of non-general fund money from the CARES Act to support school divisions who have COVID-19-related costs, including public health measures and distance learning. And the textbook fund money, of which there's 75 million, you're going to be able to use some of that money to help provide virtual instruction, and there's no local match required. And I know you all were concerned about the adjustments to the average daily attendance, you know, members. That's not going to be calculated until after March 31st. So hopefully by then, we'll be able to provide a more accurate number. With respect, by the way, to higher education, we added 94 million back in, and George Mason got their share and then some. The other thing that I think might be of importance, broadband. Of course, it's not a problem here, but it is statewide. There's 85 million in the general fund that we put in for that. And we're going to redo the transportation project, the way we fund them over the next year or two, on the condition that the money that's borrowed elsewhere gets repaid by the end of six years. So there's a lot more, but I thought these were the areas that, you know, would most impact you. The commerce and trade, what's important there with respect to the eviction process, we've established a blanket moratorium through December 31st. During that time, a landlord can apply for that. If the tenant refuses to apply and cooperate with the landlord's application for rental assistance, and beginning January 1st of this coming year, a landlord can evict the tenant for non-payment of rent only after the application for rental assistance has been made by the tenant or landlord and 45 days has gone by with no approval or denial. We've added money, 105 million from various sources for the rent and mortgage relief program. With respect to utilities, we've got a moratorium on utility disconnections until 60 days after the end of the Declaration of State of Emergency. There's also a safety valve that we put in there for the utilities if their arrears exceed 2% of the operating revenues. And the Dominion will be required to forgive $127 million of accounts that are over 30 days in arrears as of September 30th. And we're also allocating $100 million from federal relief funds for direct assistance payments on behalf of customers who have utility accounts that are over 30 days in arrears. So we got, it took us long enough, but we got a fair amount done from the standpoint of the budget. Now, I'll turn it over to Marcus now for the criminal justice work.
Yeah, happy to pick it up there. You know, the session wasn't originally called for criminal justice reform. You know, it really was called to do the types of things that Senator Sasslaw was just talking about, which was to take a look at the budget, plug any revenue holes we had, you know, and allocate funds for COVID relief. And, you know, it's funny, you hear a lot, things took a while because, you know, we were meeting virtually, or in the House's case or the Senate, they didn't always, you couldn't meet every day the way you would normally do it during a regular session. But we did accomplish a lot, and actually, we got along pretty well, despite what you hear some people say. I think we had the conference report was adopted within a matter of hours after the Senate budget came over. So I think, you know, having a House and Senate leadership of the same party, the same party as the governor, really did help us, once we got down to it, to make the negotiations go a little more smoothly. Some of these things are still in the governor's hands for final decision-making. But I think that part of it's gone pretty well, and I think we provided a lot of relief, particularly for localities and school systems to reopen and to start to make sure we have a good way to deal with the housing crisis so that we avoid a real problem with evictions. You know, we've got to have a way out of that. And I was talking to Peter Newt again at the schools about how housing stability is a really important factor for schools. You don't really think of it as a school issue, but if kids are in an unstable housing situation, it's really hard to get them to school ready to learn and do the things that they need to do. So we understand the local impact that that has and how important it is. But we also, in the meantime, while we were planning for that session, we had the murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis and the calls for criminal justice and police reform. And so that became another big topic of our special session. And that's another one where I think we were, it got a little acrimonious back and forth sometimes, but ultimately, I think we came out with a really good package of bills and did what a lot of states haven't been able to do yet. I mean, there's a big story on CNN, I think Newsweek, about if California can't solve police reform. Minnesota, they got together as a General Assembly, and they left without doing anything. In Virginia, we actually got a lot of things done. We have a ban now on chokeholds. I don't know if that was a big problem with the Falls Church City Police or not, but, you know, applying pressure to the neck as a way of gaining control over detainees and arrestees is illegal in Virginia now, with certain obvious exceptions if the, you know, reasonable fear for your life or safety. But generally speaking, we've banned chokeholds. We've limited substantially, I almost goes for saying a ban, we've limited substantially the use of no-knock warrants. You can't do those types of warrants at night. You have to announce, and you have to let people know you have a search warrant. And so we hopefully avoid the kind of problems that you saw in Kentucky that led to the death of Breonna Taylor during a raid. So again, those are big-ticket things and hard things to do that haven't happened in other places that we were able to pass. We've also made it easier for the city to vet police officers as they come in. We've done, Criminal Justice Services Board is going to have enhanced training. It's going to have enhanced screening processes. And if you have a police officer who's coming in, they'll be decertified before they can hop around. So one of the problems, and one of the things that the chiefs asked us to do is, hey, look, we have no problem throwing bad police officers out of the profession altogether. We're limited in some of what we can do by the rules. And so we fixed those rules. So if somebody quits in the middle of a disciplinary action before they can be fired, that action alone, sort of like running from the police, is evidence of guilt or evidence of knowledge of guilt. So if you quit before you can be fired, that will still get you decertified in Virginia. And if you have multiple instances of excessive use of force, which will be defined by the Criminal Justice Services Board, that'll be enough to get you decertified as a police officer as well. And I think that was one that was fairly universal. I think it passed the Senate unanimously and with only a few no votes in the House. Something that people said they wanted to get done that we were able to do here in Virginia. We also have some reforms inside the courthouse. Oh, another big one, and this has been a real problem, affects Falls Churchers. I haven't heard complaints of it happening in the city of Falls Church, but in Arlington, a lot of what we call pretextual stops. And so, you know, I could drive through Falls Church all day long with a broken taillight. Nobody seems to bother me about it. But if I come through and if I don't look like I belong in that part of town, all of a sudden, my broken taillight becomes an arrestable offense. I get pulled over, my car gets searched, and I go through all kinds of things. So we've actually passed a bill to eliminate the number, or to really reduce the number of offenses that you can be pulled over and arrested for in Virginia. The governor sent that back with a couple of revisions, you may have heard, in working through a special session. You know, one of the things you don't want to get pulled over for is a busted taillight if you're on your way to get it fixed. On the other hand, if you're driving down Broad Street in the middle of the night, you ought to have headlights, some kind of headlights. And so the governor's going to send us back a couple tweaks so that we don't go too far with that. But that's going to be a major change in the way policing is done in the area and in Northern Virginia. And we think it's going to help reduce some of the disproportionality in traffic stops and arrests that seem to happen in our region. Inside the courthouse, one of the ones that came down at the last minute was changed to the way that we do sentencing. We're eliminating the jury trial penalty in Virginia so that you can opt for a trial by jury, but you can then still go back and have the judge sentence you, which tends to, and judges are allowed to consider more factors in mitigation when doing sentences. And they also have discretion to depart from sentencing guidelines downward. They often will. And so you've eliminated the risk. It used to be people, if they chose jury trial, they had a better chance of not being convicted at all. But if they were convicted, they faced a much harsher consequence. And we didn't think it was right that people ought to have to choose longer sentences than they deserve for having the ability to have a trial by jury in Virginia. Well, most of us did, and that was a close one. That wasn't easy. There's some concern among the Commonwealth's attorneys that that's going to lead to a big increase in jury trials and greater need for resources. I talked to Parissa Tafti about it, though, and she thinks it will increase her workload some, but she thought it was a change that was worth making. So that's something that'll change the way people are tried in criminal court here in Falls Church City and in the Arlington Circuit Court, as well as Fairfax. And then post-conviction as well. We've made some changes towards understanding, again, that we have these disproportionality issues in arrests, in access to counsel, and so therefore, inside the courtroom and your options. You know, what do we do about people that are already in jail as a result of these past practices? And so we passed Don Scott and Jennifer Boyzko's Good Time Credit Bill, which will actually start to allow people that are in jail for nonviolent offenses, mostly frequently drug-related offenses and things like that, to start earning good time credit at a much faster rate than they've been able to before. Gives people an incentive to earn, and this is not reinstating parole, right? This is earned good time credits, where they will earn time off by participating in activities, by learning a trade, by participating in these pre-release programs to get themselves acclimated for a return to the community. Because the fact is, these folks are coming back to the community eventually. Why not have them prepared for reentry when they come back? So that's most of the things. I didn't hit everything that we did, but those were the big highlights. You know, the way people, the way we do policing, what they can arrest you for, how you can be tried, and then, once you've been convicted, creating opportunities for folks to earn some time off their sentences so they can reenter better. Oh, one other thing we did is, two other things that'll affect you guys more as a locality, civilian review boards. We're going to allow you, I don't know, Falls Church, I know Fairfax has a civilian review board. It doesn't have a great deal of authority. So we didn't go to a mandatory civilian review board. We went with a local option. But we gave those localities that opt to create civilian review panels, we've given the panels a lot more authority than the current system allows. And so they'll have subpoena power and investigatory authority. And they'll be a little more independent to investigate things, and they won't really just be serving as an extension of the police department itself. So that's something you guys may want to look at once that bill becomes effective. And then the other thing that affects localities, civilian review panels, there's one other thing, and I'm losing it now. So, oh, no. Oh, mental health. The Marcus Alert System, which was not named for me, I have to explain that to people. It's Jeff Born's bill, and that comes from Marcus David Peters, who unfortunately was a victim of, not victim, but he was an unfortunate police citizen. Police were responding to a mental health crisis. He was suffering a mental health crisis, but because the folks that showed up weren't trained in how to deal with him, he ended up being killed. And so we have diversion first in Fairfax. We have mental health dockets, I know, in Arlington and Fairfax. But this is going to create a system for these multidisciplinary response teams to come out so that if somebody's in a mental health crisis, the police still may be the first people on the scene, but they have the option to be accompanied by your CSB employees, social workers, psychiatrists, a multidisciplinary group of folks, so that maybe that person doesn't end up, you know, in jail, doesn't become a use-of-force situation where they're just trying to be subdued, but they can actually be appropriately managed to get that situation de-escalated and then get the person who's suffering a mental health crisis into treatment rather than into the legal system. So I think that's something you guys will be able to use as well. And then all the things that we did are funded. I mean, that's the other thing that we did. We've put money into the budget for all these things. Now, some of these local option things are not funded. You'll have to find resources for them. But we did put a lot of money into the budget to fund the estimated costs of a lot of these reforms. And so we were not trying to create a burden on localities, although we were trying to create authority for you all and tools for you all to use to improve policing in your own communities and across the state.
All right, well, thank you both very much. Obviously, you've been very busy, and we greatly appreciate your efforts. So if you don't mind, maybe we can open it up for a few questions from folks or comments. And I might start just briefly with just mentioning two items that have been of great interest to our city and our city council recently. One is stormwater, a lot of stormwater infrastructure, things that we're going to be wrestling with right now. And that's something that's going to cost a whole lot of money, but it's of great importance for us here in our community. And the second is affordable housing. We've just recently had a very significant discussion about that. We want to advance that cause and move forward quickly. And so I'll just throw out those two items as of significant interest here to our locality and ask if there's anything that we should be aware of or to keep us in mind for either legislation or for grants going forward. So I don't know if either of you have any comments as to either of those two items, but those are two areas of great interest to here to Falls Church.
Yeah, with respect to affordable housing, Cindy Meister and I have talked about this before. And there is in the budget, back when the governor amended, they put a provision in there that will allow Falls Church, because they unalotted the 2 million that I got in there for you, but they kind of did an end run. And I talked to Cindy about, there is a method by which you all can apply for the affordable housing subsidies.
That's fantastic news, Senator Sasslaw. For those of you who don't know, For those of you who don't know, you were very instrumental last year in arranging for Falls Church to receive that grant, which unfortunately was impacted by the COVID crisis. But you really went to bat for the city, so we're greatly appreciative of that, and we're delighted to hear about that new news.
Yeah, you can still access the money.
Fantastic news for us here in Falls Church. Is there anything as relates to stormwater or infrastructure that might be forthcoming or that we ought to be considering coming down the pike?
Well, the water, you know, I don't know if we laid it out specifically. The Water Quality Improvement Fund is going to be $80 million over the biennium, $50 million in FY '21, $30 million now. And I know that some of that money is in there for stormwater management.
Well, that's great news to hear as well.
Mayor, I think this is going to be a priority for our whole region. I mean, I think the city of Falls Church has this issue, but I know that some of your neighbors, I hear in Fairfax and Alexandria, are making a big push on that as well at the regional level. So I think it's certainly something we can look for, look forward to in January and work together again as a region on that.
Right.
We appreciate that.
If we have a significant improvement, I'll try to specifically stick the $2 million back in the budget again.
We'd be certainly delighted. Any, any assistance you can provide is most greatly appreciated, both of you. We do have some other comments and questions if you all would, wouldn't mind. I want to go ahead and open it up to my colleagues with some questions. I believe Ms. Hardy has one. Ms. Hardy?
Great, thank you. Thank you, Senator and Delegate, for joining us tonight. So on the theme of regional needs, I just wanted to quick comment that, thank you for, again, the local authority on banning firearms in Falls Church. I think we are excited to join the region and having a consistent policy on that. So while it was difficult to do, I think it was the right decision for this region. So thank you again for enabling that for us.
Absolutely.
All right, other comments, questions? All right, Mr. Duncan?
Delegate, Senator, great to see you. Marcus, did I miss the talk about body cameras in your police discussion? Has there been any funding or any provisions for body cams for?
You know, no. There, that wasn't, it's interesting you mentioned that. It was not a big part of the conversation at the special session here. I think, I think it continues to be important. We were, we focused on, again, some of the more rip-from-the-headlines things and some of the more systemic things. I think that the problem with body cameras is the expenses, as we, as we're learning, go beyond just the hardware, right? It's also becomes time for Commonwealth's attorneys and then also for public defenders when you, when you fund a public defense office to, to review and look at all that information and so forth. So that wasn't, that just wasn't an issue that rose to the surface here during the special session. So you didn't miss it. It just wasn't something that we talked a whole lot about this time around.
Right, well, thank you for your awareness of the cost associated with it. I know there's a Virginia Municipal League discussion about it, and there were some concerns by localities about just what you said, which is the administrative cost of dealing with the footage, storing it, watching it, you know, there's, there's more to it than meets the eye. So thanks for that. Also, thanks for working with the governor to fix up the, we can still stop cars that don't have headlights or taillights. I think that's probably a thing that I'm glad you all responded to.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thanks, Dave. Yeah, I just want to thank both you guys for bringing the resolutions to the floor in the Senate and House. For Dan, he's done some incredible things for, for us here in Falls Church and for the region. We'll be sorely missed. I want to appreciate you both spending some time tonight to do that. And ditto on what my, my colleagues have said about what you guys have done for Falls Church, both of you. We sincerely appreciate it. And as you guys know, 2020 and certainly 2021, and for the next few years, can be very difficult for most of the jurisdictions here. Any support you guys can continue to give us in terms of easing regulations to allow our businesses to operate and be successful and getting us the funds that we need to deal with things like stormwater and bolstering our school, school budgets will be, can be very important for us. So just putting an exclamation point on that. And again, thank you guys for, for coming tonight with, with those resolutions or what you've done for the city and for Dan. Thank you.
Because, thank you. You reminded me of something I meant to talk about, too. The Senator McPike had a bill actually to create flexibility for, for liquor licenses and for restaurants so that you can, because what happens, sometimes some restaurants don't have the ability to create a site that's immediately adjacent to their facility, and their parking lot's too small or whatever. So it seems silly, right? But if you have a little tent in an area set up right outside, you can, you can serve alcohol there. But if you have to put it across the street or across a certain boundary line, you have to have a special event license, and you can only carry that on for so many days and so on and so forth. So we've done some work, actually. It's amazing how much of the deregulation has been around ABC stuff to try, because that, as we find out, I know who worked in the restaurant business knows that's where the money is. I always loved it when I was away to tables. I could sell the specials all day long, but if they wanted to sit down and drink, then I knew I was going to get a big tip at the end of the, of the evening.
Representative, you know, you know your constituency here very well. You're pandering to an audience here. So those types of things are important to us for the bars and restaurants, and we sincerely appreciate it. Yeah, I certainly understand, and I know our businesses would like that flexibility as well. So thank you for pushing for that, too.
All right, Mr. Snyder?
Sure. So thank you for the discussion so far, and I certainly want to second the priority that we put on stormwater funding and affordable housing funding and, and the comment on the, the ability to restrict firearms. I guess the other question that I had was transportation funding, and I wonder if you all could speak to that. I know that the Secretary of Transportation was given some flexibility. Could you sort of outline where we are on transportation funding and where you think we'll be next year?
What's going to enable them to do is to borrow from, you know, future expenditures, okay? They have to ultimately be repaid. But as you know, you know, the gas tax has taken a significant hit as a result of this, which was a major, you know, funding item. But we're going to allow them to borrow against future projects, but they have to be repaid out of their monies in order that we don't disrupt more than what is necessary, the, you know, our, our six-year plan. And it authorizes also the shifting of mass transit funds, well, you know, from capital projects, ridership incentives, and special programs to statewide operating in Womata for FY '21 only. The, the, a lot of the other stuff is just, is administrative things, which won't have too big of an impact. But essentially, in total, it'll allow the Commonwealth Transportation Board to reprogram up to 1.1 billion revenues, in revenues from existing projects and face the implementation of a new allocation formula adopted in 2020. As you know, my bill raised the gasoline tax over the next couple of years, and it's a good thing we did because of the hit that it took. And we still have one of the lowest state gas taxes in America. But all, when all is said and done, over the next five, six years, the Transportation Department is going to get an additional 370-some million dollars as a result of the bill that I had and that Eileen Phillicorn had. So, you know, we're, we're moving in the right direction. And I know that one of the important projects, I guess, is that Route 7 bus line from Tysons to Alexandria that goes through your city. The, and by the way, let me tell you, in all the years I've been in office, I've represented a lot of localities over the years, and it has been nothing but an absolute pleasure to represent your city. You all have one of the best-minded governments in this state, and I mean that.
Well, Senator, I want, I want to thank you particularly for your work on budgetary issues and helping us on some of those key issues. So thanks very much, Senator.
Glad to help.
All right, are there any other questions or comments? Mary Beth Conley, Vice Mayor Conley?
I don't want to miss my turn to say hello and thank you and echo what everyone else has said. And especially thank you for recognizing Dan Z, who really was a key member of the city council and taught of, taught all of us a lot. And I know that all of us learned from him about green energy and sustainability, and I hope he taught you as well. So thanks for all you're doing. And I followed your session. You were there for so long, working so hard on this. So I do appreciate your time on behalf of the city.
Let me tell you all something. One of the things that delayed this, and, you know, I, I don't want to get into, you know, political situations, but for whatever reason, the Republicans would not waive in the Senate constitutional readings process, which is just normally always done. And that delayed, that probably delayed us, when all is said and done, two to three weeks. So on top of that, every day during what's known as personal privilege, where you can get up and discuss whatever you want, say whatever you want, every day, you had essentially the same senators getting up, talking about the same thing, usually complaints about the northern administration. And these speeches would go on for 20 or 30 minutes. And this speaks into your day. In fact, it got to the point where I told the Washington Post, had that crowd been in Philadelphia 230 years ago, we'd still be singing "God Save the Queen." So, you know, that was one of the reasons this thing got dragged out, at least in the Senate. Marcus can tell you about the House, but I don't think it was any different.
Well, we had a similar situation at the beginning of the session, and we spent five days literally having to read a rules change five times so that we could meet virtually. And the Republicans, they were giving us no, no, no breaks. And I get it. I mean, because their narrative wanted to be that we were, you know, we're the gang that can't shoot straight. You know, Democrats take over for the first time in 27 years, and look at how long everything's taken, and they don't know what they're doing. But, you know, at the end of the day, I think that the voter is going to care about the products that, you know, that we produce legislatively and the improvements we made to people's lives. But, but yeah, I, I get you, Senator Sasslon. We, we hear that. You guys were there for so long, we wince a little bit because that was, you know, I think a deliberate strategy on the part of the opposition. One more thing, while I have the floor, we also put some more money in the budget, about another $10 million for voter registrars. We gave you guys a lot of new authority for voting and things like that. And so the registrars complained that they didn't have enough money to do all the great stuff that they're now expected to do. So you guys have been doing an amazing job. I love representing Falls Church, as Senator Sasslon said. I'm bragging on Twitter every day about Dave Bierke's numbers of voters and early voters in the city. You guys have by far the highest percentage. And so, you know, I tease him a little bit about why Alexandria is such, such laggards when it comes to voting. He does point out that they're a lot bigger and more populous than Falls Church, but that's no excuse. And I'm happy to see Dave Bierke be one of the first folks to put up one of the, the ballot drop-off boxes at City Hall. You know, so you guys are doing a great job with that, and we all know Falls Church City votes. And, you know, I was glad to be able to make that easier and more efficient. I think we can get to like close to 90% in Falls Church this year, if not higher.
All right. Well, thank you all, unless there's any other comments or questions. Once again, thank you so much for taking time out of your evening, particularly as it relates to Dan, and we look forward to more fully celebrating his life and accomplishments and hope you'll join us in the spring when that's more formalized. In the meantime, we thank you for all the great work you do for the city of Falls Church and our residents, and to look forward to continuing dialogue with you. So thank you all for coming out this evening.
Thanks for having us.
All right, let's move on to the receipt of public comment. Madam Clerk?
Yes. We did receive late this evening a memo from the Planning Commission that was forwarded to council regarding stormwater, the stormwater issue and the bonding issues on, on stormwater. So you all should have received that, and I will upload that with the documents to this meeting at the end of the meeting. The only other comment we received was from Carol Bastian of 304, Carol and Robert Bastian, 304 West Columbia Street. And they urged council to continue funding engineering work for the six priority projects, Harrison Branch, Trammell Branch, Hillwood Number Two, Shero, Hillwood Number One, and Lincoln.
All right, thank you. Are there any council requests? All right, let's move on to the report of the city manager, Mr. Shields.
Oh, Mayor.
Mayor, I did.
All right, so two comments, Mr. Snyder and then Ms. Hardy.
Thanks, Mayor. At our last meeting, I voted to abstain on a motion to certify a closed session. I did so not because it was inappropriate as a legal matter, but I did so because I felt the public should know about the developments that were discussed. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the clarification. Ms. Hardy?
Yes, Mr. Shields, I know that you had sent through staff's memo on the Northern Virginia Juvenile Detention Center. So given that we're part of the regional effort to decide what to do with the future of the center, I want to see whether you think H Sac could actually take this on for us in their November meeting and look through the report and provide us their thoughts on next steps.
I think that's an excellent suggestion. We'll follow up with them with that request if, if all are in agreement. All right, sounds good. All right, let's move on to the report of the city manager, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. Just a few things to report on tonight. First, I want to congratulate Eric Aldrich, who won, was, was named today as the inaugural winner of the Chet Delong Award for Outstanding Service to the Library. And this is a new award that the Library Foundation has brought forward, and its intent is to recognize long, sustained commitment to, of service to our library, which Mr. Delong exemplifies perhaps better than anyone in the city's history. But Mr. Aldrich is a 16-year veteran of our library system and, and has treated so many of our patrons with great care and enthusiasm and innovation. And so congratulations to Eric on that recognition. I wanted to note, for those who are thinking about Halloween and how to do Halloween safely in the COVID environment, I encourage you to look on the city's webpage or to follow our e-focus or our COVID updates, where there's lots of information about that. And there will be information also about, as we go into the holiday season, ways that the CDC and our own local health department are giving us helpful and useful advice on how we can navigate these, these celebrations safely. But specifically for Halloween, with the guidance from the CDC, which the city has shared on, you know, through our communication channels, is to think about sort of how to go about things safely. And some of the things that they recommend are doing, you know, virtual costume contests or scavenger hunts, pumpkin carving and that type of thing. Things that are of slightly higher risk would be if you, if you do put out trick, you know, treats for trick-or-treaters, to actually put them in goodie bags beforehand, in separate bags so that people could just pick them up rather than sort of getting into a big bowl and sort of sharing treats that way. And having those treats also distanced from your front porch. And you can be on the porch and see the kids go by, but it's recommended that they not come to the door. Any types of crowded events, of course, are discouraged, and particularly indoor gatherings are discouraged. One thing I do want to note is that our own Wreckin' Parks Department has taken up the challenge for outdoor scavenger events. And so for Halloween, there is a park scavenger hunt where in six of the city's parks, there is a letter that is hidden in the park. And if you go and find that letter and collect all the letters or write them down, you can decode a super spooky Halloween word, and if you crack the code, you can get a free t-shirt. So thank you to our Wreckin' Park staff for having a fun Halloween event for everybody. We did have to cancel the traditional Halloween festival that we have at the community center. That will not be occurring this Saturday. I want to note on Park Avenue, just thank everybody for your patience. just thank everybody for your patience. We're near the end. Fairfax Water has replaced all of the water infrastructure that they need to do there. And now they are repaving the street. Now typically, they would just pave that part of the street where they did the work, but the city did jump in to have them pave curb to curb in the entire area where there was disturbance, so that we'll have a good layer of asphalt, you know, for the whole street. And of course, the big grant for the Park Avenue Great Streets project is from North Virginia over to the State Theater. And so that part is not being repaved and will be part of that future project. And then lastly, so again, just thanks, everybody, for your patience. And we think that that work will be completed, weather permitting, by the end of this week. Lastly, I just want the public to be aware that, as was noted by Delegate Simon and Senator Sasso, what a great job our registrar of voters, David Bierke, is doing, and the Electoral Board, and our volunteers who help with our elections. It is a tremendous thing that they do. Every day, people are voting at City Hall. They're voting early, and they have been since September 15. We are working with our colleagues in public safety around the region just to make sure that if there are any instances of voter intimidation or anything that is on the radar screen that could interfere with anyone's right to vote, that we are, I think, well-prepared and there to make sure that that doesn't happen, and we have safe and effective elections. And so that's what everybody is focused on. And that's work that is happening across the region, but also obviously locally with our own police and public safety staff here. So that's my report for tonight, and would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Vice Mayor Connolly's got the first one. So let's turn it over to her. Vice Mayor Connolly, then followed by Ms. Hardy.
Mr. Shields, I just would like to propose that for the next few weeks, instead of calling ourselves the Little City, we call ourselves the Big Civic City, because we are doing so well in civics. And I think kids are learning it in school, and adults are enacting it, and the kids are participating. So I'm really proud of everyone in Falls Church. The Big Civic City.
I like it. All right. Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Thank you for the update, Mr. Shields. On Park Avenue, I want to make sure that the Sharrow painting is going to go back in on Park Avenue. It was already faded before the repaving and all the water work. But I know that's something that was helpful, is have kind of an alternative route, especially while the WOD is under construction too.
Well, thank you for that comment. And anytime we do put fresh asphalt down, that is our opportunity to get fresh paint markings down with all the new ped crossings and bike facilities. And so we will make sure that those are in and bright on the new asphalt.
And I assume there's not room for a dedicated bike lane itself?
Yeah, that is correct. We do not have the sufficient right of way there.
It's worth asking. Thank you.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yep, thanks. Hey, well, I just wanted to check in on the status of the Oak Seaton Marshall work.
That work is going to get underway this week. So the first thing you'll hear is jackhammers. So you'll be the first to know. But yes, we'll have that new sidewalk put in with the bump outs before we'll get started. So thanks to Zach Bradley and to the DPW crew on that.
For sure. Look forward to seeing them around town. And I do love that sound. Sound of progress. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Connolly, another second question?
Sorry, one more question. And that is, Mr. Shields, I just want to make sure that the public safety officers are working closely with the school staff for pickup and drop-off at those elementary schools as those new plans are put into place, because more kids will be walking and more kids will be being dropped off in cars. So I'm hoping that the school staff has been in touch with, and the city police staff has been in touch with the schools regarding pickup and drop-off and other things that may affect traffic throughout the community.
Yes. So we're working together with the school administration just to get prepared for a smooth wave two reopening with a focus on Mount Daniel and TJ Elementary School. So yes, that coordination is happening.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, I just note that I did hear from Dan's wife, Elizabeth, who was able to watch the tribute that just was paid by Delegate Simon and Senator Sasso. And I think she was most appreciative. So that's good to know. Let's go ahead and move on to the business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item, please?
And Mayor Tarter, we're going to suggest actually that the bond resolution and the budget item, they can be read in order as shown on the agenda, but we would suggest that we handle them together and that we actually discuss the budget item first, because depending on how the council's consensus reaches on the budget will then determine how the bond goes.
Exactly. Now, that makes sense. And we did speak of that earlier today. And before we get started, since we're going to be hearing this together, I imagine there may be a disclosure or two. And so while I look to find that, I'm going to ask if anyone else, such as the vice mayor and Mr. Snyder, want to read any kind of disclosure before our consideration of the budget?
I can read mine, Mayor. I make the following statement before City Council's discussion of TO 20-22, an amendment to the FY 2021 budget. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by these matters. I can participate in them fairly objectively and in the public interest.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Snyder, do you have something to say as well?
Sure. A fellow that is not required, I make the following statement before City Council's consideration of budgetary issues. My independent adult daughter is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore is a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by the city's budget. I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I also wish to make a disclosure. I make the following statement before City Council's consideration of TO 20-22, an amendment to the FY 2021 budget. My wife is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by this matter. I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest. All right. Now that that's out of the way, Mr. Shields, are you or Ms. Bowel going to go ahead and make this presentation?
Well, if I could get us, it sounds like the clerk is trying to say something.
Did you want the titles read or?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. TR 20-39 is a second reading and a public hearing, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation, public improvement, and refunding bonds. And then the second one is a first reading, TO 20-22, ordinance to amend ordinances 2009, 2012, and 2016 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2021 for the general fund, school operating fund, and the capital improvements program funds.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Shields?
Okay. Let me provide just an overview of how this budget ordinance relates to the bond issuance and why the two are being considered sort of in sequence. So for the budget ordinance, what this is really intended to do, and Ms. Bowel will just give us an overview of it in her staff report. But this is our normal fall carryforward budget amendment, where underspending from the last fiscal year is either re-appropriated or shifted to reserves. And this year, we also have the CARES grant funding, which would be our second round of appropriating those, and then any other changes to the budget that are needed. And so that's what this ordinance does. The issue, which was discussed at length with the City Council at work session, is the funding of the stormwater improvements. And so as it's before the council right now, it is simply a question of financing. And in the adopted CIP, or the budget that the City Council approved last spring, the funding for the engineering portion of these stormwater projects was adopted in the budget. And so that's in the budget today. So the question is, what is the way that we're going to pay for it? And what the staff recommendation is, is to do what we planned in the capital improvements program when it was adopted last spring, and issue debt for the big six stormwater projects. And the first tranche of debt would be in the amount of $400,000. And that would be used to advance the engineering up to final engineering, so that the next step then for the City Council would be to allow the construction to proceed, which is far more expensive. The total for the construction for the big six, recommended by the Stormwater Task Force, is 7.4 million. And to cover the debt service for 7.4 million in new projects, plus to hire two new project managers for the stormwater fund, that will ultimately require a significant increase in the stormwater fee to pay for that. And that fee increase is not before us immediately, but the decision on how to finance the engineering for the major projects needs to be done mindfully of how ultimately it will be paid for when we move to construction. So the staff recommendation is to fund $400,000 for that engineering through the issuance of debt. And that would be part of, you know, we're refunding larger debt issuances from 2013 and 2011. That will result in some savings to the general fund in this smaller funding for stormwater engineering, in the amount of $400,000, would be tacked into that bond issuance as part of that refunding of the earlier date to take advantage of lower interest rates. So the option that was requested by the City Council was to not issue debt for that $400,000 for stormwater fund engineering, but instead use the 2020 underspending and effectively cash fund it through a transfer from the general fund to the stormwater fund. And in addition, there was a request to have an option to transfer $100,000 to the Affordable Housing Fund. That also would come out of 2020 underspending, where it is currently, you know, that money is sitting in unassigned fund balance today. And one last note, when we talked about this last week, we were talking about $500,000 to the Stormwater Fund for engineering of the big six projects. That's been reduced to $400,000, because one of the projects that the council approved about a month and a half ago, of using cash out of the Stormwater Fund to do some smaller immediate projects, one of those is not proceeding because the homeowner has, I think, not agreed to the easement, granting an easement for that project. So that $100,000 would be then repurposed to go towards the big six that are recommended by the Stormwater Task Force. So that's a quick summary of what I think kind of the main issue is. I do want to note that we have Zach Bradley, our interim director of Public Works. We have Andre Prince, our lead engineer for our stormwater and sanitary sewer utility, and Mike Domenica, our engineer who worked most closely with the Stormwater Task Force through its deliberations over the past year. They're all on this call. And so having outlined what I think that sort of one of the main issues is with the budget, let me just turn it over to Kiran, just so the public is aware of what else is in this budget ordinance. And then we'll come back to the stormwater issues and what the council's direction is on that. And one last note I'll make is that if the council does choose to make a change to the way that this is presented, following the draft motion, the alternative motion that has been drafted for the City Council, then when this comes back on second reading, the ordinance will be fully updated to reflect whatever change the council might make. Ms. Bowel?
Good evening, Mayor Tarters, Mayor Tarter, and members of the council. So on the budget amendment item that we have before you, it is the first reading of the second budget amendment for this fiscal year, which requests appropriation of CARES funding, commitment of fiscal year 2020 permit fee revenues, carryforward of certain unspent fiscal year 2020 funds, and reprogramming of unspent CIP funds to the South Washington Multimodal Plaza project in the special transportation front. I would like to highlight a couple of changes in this item since the work session last Monday. This item includes requests appropriation of three additional grants, one from U.S. Department of Justice to purchase bulletproof vests, another one from U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration for speed enforcement, and a third one from Virginia Department of Environmental Quality for litter management. And just to summarize what Mr. Shields just said, at this time, the staff is not recommending appropriation of the remaining unspent fiscal year 2020 general fund balance, which totals 540,000, although an alternate motion is provided to increase the use of general fund balance by 500,000 to draw down 2020 year-end savings by transferring $400,000 to the Stormwater Fund for use in capital projects in lieu of debt proceeds, and transferring $100,000 to the Affordable Housing Unit Fund. And that's, no other changes are being proposed to this item since the last discussion on Monday, October 19. And on the bond issuance item that we have before you, it is a resolution. And that requests authorization to issue the debt to refund 2011 and 2013 bonds totaling 10.9 million at a lower interest rate, and to fund, and also to fund new capital projects in the Stormwater Utility Fund for $400,000, and the Sanitary Sewer Utility Fund for $250,000. We are not requesting any new general fund-supported debt as part of this issuance. The table on page two, I would like to bring your attention to that, of page two of the staff report, that provides an alternate funding plan for each of the CIP funded proposed items that are in the general fund. So at this time, no general fund items are being proposed for debt. And of course, in alignment with the alternate motion that flows from the budget amendment, another similar alternate motion is provided as part of the bond resolution to align with the ordinance. And should the council decide to use the unspent fiscal year 2020 general fund balance to fund the design of the six stormwater facility improvement projects in lieu of issuing debt. And I think with that, I wrap up my report. And staff and myself are available to address any questions that council may have.
All right. Thank you very much. And we do have at least one question, probably more. But our first question is from Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Yep, thanks. So just going back to these two resolutions and kind of the genesis of how they're laid out in the alternatives. For me, the stormwater issue, so everything else aside, which I'm fine with, the stormwater issue is not really a matter of how we're going to pay for it. It wasn't a, let's just get down to brass tacks on debt versus cash from underspending. My position has been, as it relates to stormwater, is that I'm not going to vote for anything to commit us to engineering six projects without having solutions illustrated, committed to, written out for upstream. And I do appreciate the fact, Zach, that you guys sent a memo addressing some of those concerns. And I think it was issued back on the 23rd and attached to the agenda documents. However, the discussion over the upstream seemed to be entirely focused on what it would take for the city to provide a centralized retention-detention facility, which was an upstream solution that, at least as far as I can recall, was not even considered. I don't think that anybody had recommended that that was the upstream solution that we should be considering. One, it's completely infeasible. We don't have the land, and it certainly wouldn't bear the return on investment. We don't have the land, and it certainly wouldn't wouldn't bear the return on investment, as you guys so eloquently laid out. I was expecting to get back some details on upstream solutions, which you guys alluded to, I think, in that second paragraph of the second page, which talked very briefly, I think, in one sentence about micro and local solutions of retention-detention on site. And I do want to make it clear, and and maybe this wasn't clear throughout conversations, the idea of upstream solutions in parallel with these downstream projects are not that the upstream would ever be, it wouldn't be a binary thing in my in my mind. It's not an upstream is enough to solve for what we're trying to solve for downstream. It's a commitment for us to solve the root of the problem, which we are not doing right now. And I am absolutely convinced that if we only focus on this downstream, once the horse is out of the barn, it's going to be very difficult for us to get a commitment to solve for some of the upstream. So I am willing to commit money, and we can talk debt versus cash to to engineer these these big six projects. If I can get a commitment from folks in in writing and also in planning on how we're going to solve for the upstream, so we're not just throwing money at problems that we're still creating in other areas of the city. And I look at that in two ways. One, if we want to vote tonight, and this is just my opinion, obviously, everybody else can do what they want to do, I will vote to to move this money that's being discussed and illustrated in these budgets in this in this bond resolution to to take on just what we can afford now, so we can pick one, two projects, that's fine. We can pay for them with the money that we have. And I would still like to see the upstream solutions. Or if I can get a commitment to upstream solutions at some point in the future, then I would personally consider allocating money to engineer these these six projects. But as it stands right now, I just think it is very unwise and fiscally irresponsible of us to engineer these six projects, which will ultimately and ultimately commit us to raising fees and committing us to continue these projects. And I know folks say we can engineer and we can put these on a shelf and we can address them, you know, at some point in the future. But again, I've seen this story before. And once we spend that money, there's going to be a push to continue those projects because the same rationale will be used as it was used on other projects like the library and others, which is, once we've done the engineering, in order to make sure that they stay fresh and not stale, and we don't sink more money into it, we need to continue. So my my recommendations are, one, somebody give me some 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 applicable, practical, pragmatic upstream solutions so we can solve for both of them at the same time. Or take the money that we have from underspending, what we're talking about here, pick one of those projects, spend within our means, operate within our means, accomplish one of those, and then we could start working our way down the list. But without a comprehensive solution, I just cannot commit us to doubling our stormwater fee, to throw money at downstream problems when we are not solving for the issues upstream. And frankly, I'm not even convinced that the 10-year solution is going to solve the problem for the 100-plus houses that that we're talking about in this area. So I want to put that out there for folks that may have a more eloquent solution or a suggestion in terms of how we bridge this. I'm not against solving for stormwater. I want to make that very clear. I'm not against these six projects. I understand that this has been an issue for a lot of folks in this city. A lot of us have had flooding. I've had three in as many years, and no other folks have had it 10 times as bad. So I'm not against that. But but I refuse to go down a path where we're only solving for half of the problem and potentially burning money on something that is not going to get us the return that we need as much as it may feel good in the short term. So I'll I'll leave that with the group here, and hopefully someone's got a solution that gets us to a compromise that makes sense, at least in my mind. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let me just ask Ms. Bawa or Mr. Shields, what's the time sensitivity on either or both of these matters?
Mayor Tarter, so the bond resolution, we are hoping to issue the bond should we have a resolve from council award and RFP within this week and close, make a award so that we have a fixed rate that we are going to issue prior to the election and close by November 6th on the bond resolution. And the amendment will come back to council for a second, and the amendment ordinance, the budget amendment will come back to council on November 9th for a second hearing.
Got it. And so this bond, though, that's just the desire to issue it this week. It may risk maybe that bonds go up, they may go down, we don't know what's going to happen. And so other than the sort of the desire to do it, is there a need to do it this week?
Well, if we have to do the refunding, we would like to close it prior to the, at least lock the rate prior to the election so that we are not subject to a whole lot of uncertainty, given the absentee ballots and and the results may not be known immediately. It's expected that the markets could have some sort of repercussion, but it's it's nothing is for certain. If we do not have a direction from council today, then we we would not go in to issue even the refunding because we would, it's prudent to do the new project funding and the refunding all at one time to save in the issuance costs. So we don't do it in two tranches and do it all together. So to avoid that, we'd like to do it. Mr. Shields, you may want to add something more.
I think you're muted, Mr. Shields.
Sorry. I'm just saying, I agree with everything that Ms. Bawa said. And I would just note that, you know, the the refunding of the bond is what's driving the schedule right now. And and that isn't, I mean, we could do that later. There's no external reason why that has to be done this moment. The practical effect is that while the city council has approved the CIP to to proceed with the engineering for the for the stormwater task force recommended projects, there is no money available to do it. So if the council were to defer this, just and and say, you know, the, you know, with the COVID environment and the fragility of the economy, we should just wait, then that's a fine from a fiscal planning, from a financial management perspective. But the practical result is the engineering won't proceed because we don't have the money in hand to do it.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Hardy, do you have a question?
Yes, several, actually. So I'm going to start with maybe the easier one, at least for me. So I think in this alternative motion, part of it calls for transferring 100,000 to the Affordable Housing Fund. And so I think it's probably clear to everyone that I would support that and then some. But I want to make sure, and I sent a message to staff earlier today, that we're not just transferring money and it sits idly in the fund. So, Mr. Shields, I think it'd be helpful to share with the council and the public what the plan for that money would be.
So thank you. And so we did have a discussion with staff about that today. And I think that kind of the main thrust would be to use it in terms of positioning the city to, in its attempts to access a larger grant through the Amazon funding process. And that's done through a competitive grant process with Virginia Housing. And it was referenced by Senator Sasselaw earlier this evening, where he put in legislation to make it clear that the City of Falls Church is an eligible recipient, along with Fairfax, Arlington, and Alexandria. And so I I think that would probably be the the focus of how we would use those dollars. The Affordable Housing Fund currently has a balance of just under 315,000. So we would augment that as part of a financial package that we would take to try to have a project that is feasible to either preserve or build new affordable housing in the city.
Got it. And knowing that housing and human resources staff in general has been really taxed with our COVID response, I guess I would support the spend money to make money approach, where if we need help writing the grant to help us win the three and a half million dollars, that seems like it would be $100,000 well spent, kind of planning the strategy behind it. So I'm fine with that. Moving on to stormwater. So I am also neutral on whether we use cash or debt financing. I see the pros and cons. I think clearly in this environment, some would probably want to have more reserves on hand, given low interest rates. I see the pros with trying to debt finance it, debt financing it. However, the reason I brought this up several meetings ago, I think I was just struck by the inconsistency in our approach. I think when we first brought this up in work session, we've talked about how we were going to debt finance George Mason practice field lights and 911 infrastructure things that previously were going to be debt financed, but we decided to use cash for those because we wanted to keep our debt levels low. And so I find it pretty inconsistent that we're now proposing $400,000 to our engineering plans, and then eventually $12 million. And so that's something that I just want to keep in mind. But in terms of actual funding it, I'm pretty neutral. On stormwater itself, I think, having debated this multiple times, I want to be clear that this is not, for any of us, kind of an either or binary decision. I think when we talk about upstream solutions and all those different ideas, for me, this is definitely a both and. I think I'm looking for staff to commit to kind of that comprehensive plan and to use the language, I think, from a member of Stormwater Task Force himself, who mentioned it to us, that he believes that pipes alone are insufficient, and we need a multi-pronged effort. I believe that multi-pronged effort needs to have three prongs. One, which is those downstream pipes as proposed, some or all of them, to convey the water. I think the second is all that upstream work and not necessarily just the limited scope of the upstream work as laid out in the memo, because I don't think detention in one location is exactly what we had in mind. I think we're talking about infiltration plans, detention retention at multiple sites, tighter enforcement of the existing development rules, looking at more stringent impervious coverage, potentially mature tree canopy preservation, and all those upstream practices. In fact, I wanted to call out the letter that came to us from the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission has a role in approving or actually recommending the CIP. And they reminded us in their letter today that they caution us against investing in stormwater projects in the absence of the green infrastructure plan. And all those items I just listed are examples of what would be in a green infrastructure plan. So I did want to make sure that people saw that. And the third prong of it, I think, is a more equitable and funding stream. So beyond the stormwater fee we have today, I'd like to know whether we have the legal ability to charge some sort of tiered fee system, a surcharge if you max out on the 35% impervious coverage. I think another member of the Stormwater Task Force also pointed out that we currently don't charge a stormwater fee for new residential construction compared to our neighbors Arlington and Fairfax. So that definitely seems like things that we should look into beyond just raising our own current fee. So again, I don't think any of us are saying we don't want to support these downstream projects, but I do feel like this is an opportunity for us to commit to that comprehensive plan and address those other two prongs of this three-pronged effort. And I think only putting money against this one prong feels foolish because we might be throwing money away. So I guess one option that I don't see quantified, right now, the options in front of us are fund with cash or fund with debt. The third one that I think Ross has mentioned is, you know, can we figure out what we can afford to do that doesn't double the stormwater fee and then work backwards from that and only start the stormwater work and plans for those projects? Because I worry that we are committing ourselves to more that we can bite off with six projects right now. That last part was a question that I don't know whether we have an answer for.
Yeah, I I so I've said quite a bit, and I did want to just note that Zach Bradley and Mike Domenica and Andre Prince are on the line, and welcome them to jump in as well. Maybe I'll just give, you know, one one quick answer to your question. From a staff perspective, to be honest, when we get the go-ahead to do engineering for a project, kind of our sights are to sort of to try to shoot through the target and not just do the engineering, but to build it. That's definitely our mindset. But there is a next decision point for the city council, once you have the the engineering to make that next step in terms of financing the construction. So the city council does have that next decision point that would be before you, where you will make that decision. So I will say also that I, you know, I think that with Mr. Littenhouse's questions also about sort of the commitments for the upstream solutions, I think staff might have some some things to say say about that. And and Mr. Domenica actually sent me a note saying he he did have a couple of thoughts just in that area as well.
So why don't we do this, though? I know probably each council comment has some responses that could come to it. Why don't we just sort of hear the council comments and then have a collective response instead of person by person? I suspect a lot of the themes are going to end up being spoken by council members. So I know Mr. Prince had his hand up, and and we're going to get to staff to let them fully respond to the comments. So why don't we first roll through the council comments and then collectively staff can respond? Our next question comes from Mr. Snyder.
So I support moving forward with the engineering for several reasons. Regardless of whether we do the upstream, we're going to have to address these these particular situations and delaying. The engineering will simply increase the cost. I also support moving forward with the bond issue sooner rather than later. It's highly possible that there will be some conditions that might result in increased interest rates after the election. So I support either option for moving forward, and I think we should move forward with the engineering. Also, when the engineering, as the engineering is going forward, we can look at what grants and other opportunities might be available and how to fund and sequence the projects as well as address the larger context in which we're operating, both from a local standpoint, but also regional, state, and national effort in terms of additional funding and opportunities to address mitigation efforts more broadly. So I support either one of those two options for funding, and I think we should move forward. With respect to taking the alternative option, I support the additional 100,000 for affordable housing. But if we take the 400,000 also out of the operating budget, I would favor maintaining some of that money in the operating budget so that we can commit more funds more rapidly to traffic calming. I mean, we've talked about traffic calming. It's the number one issue that our citizens are bringing to us, yet it's been a constant struggle to get dollar for dollar. So what I would prefer actually is a hybrid of the two options, where we debt fund the engineering work, we take $100,000 from operating for affordable housing, and an additional $100,000 to add to whatever we're putting forward for neighborhood traffic calming at least. So I would favor a hybrid approach. But I do believe we need to move forward with the engineering, partly to set the stage, if you will, for the ability to look at various options for funding and various sequencing in the future. But if we don't have the engineering done, there are wild estimates at this point, or estimates that are relatively unreliable. So that's where I would put in terms of the initial conversation for discussion tonight. Thank you.
All right. Other council comments, council member comments. Ms. Conley.
Thanks, Mayor Tarter. So I was listening to Mr. Lickenhouse's concerns about, will we do the engineering and then we're going to push ahead and have to do the actual work, no matter what the cost is? And I would agree that that is a concern. However, back when we started this thing, we chartered the committee, we heard the stories about how bad the floods were, we asked these volunteers to work on this. So I think the next step is to do the engineering. Listening to Senator Sasselaw talk about possibilities of grant funding and other opportunities that we could apply for, maybe there is a way to do it where we're not going to have to spend as much money as possible. I do feel like we need to keep going on this, and if there's a way to do it now rather than later, we should do it now. But if there's a need to take our foot off the gas and review things and not issue the bond till later, I would I would be okay with that as well. I thought the Planning Commission's letter on green infrastructure planning was was really compelling, and that goes exactly to the, you know, green infrastructure equals upstream, as far as I'm concerned, that we can really take a look at the whole process. And then the last thing is, every time we end up with a, not a surplus, but an underspending, we have this conversation about what's the best way to spend it, and there's always we have this conversation about what's the best way to spend it and there's always something that comes up that's always the most important thing. And I, I think it's really important that we keep talking about it and keep deciding how is it that we're going to spend this money? And I also think it's really important that maybe we do put a lot of it in capital reserves because we don't know what's coming around the corner next and next year's budget is going to be a big challenge. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. I don't know if there are any other council comments. I've got a few. First off, I would say that we should, in my opinion, proceed with the engineering. For those folks who have flooding problems, it's not going to happen soon enough. If you've got 10 inches of water in your house, you know, once every year or whatever it is, it's just, you just can't live like that. If you have family, you've got kids, you have mold issues, health issues, I just feel like it's a fundamental responsibility of government. And whether it's expensive or not, I think we can't say no to something like that because it's an expensive cost. That being said, I do agree with others that we ought to look to other solutions and I'm certainly most interested in environmentally friendly or green solutions. I would like to hear more from staff on sort of a cost benefit analysis. So to my mind, I'd like to do the, the, the solutions that have the most bang for the buck. So if that's upstream, great. I believe the answer is probably that for many aspects of this, we just need bigger pipes. You can only do so much with some of these green solutions, but I would be interested in kind of a cost benefit analysis, kind of ranking, what are the most cost efficient solutions? But I certainly think we ought to consider and implement as many of those upstream and upstream and green solutions that we can. With respect to using our quote surplus or underspending, I would just caution, there's a lot of uncertainty in the world. We have a very expensive high school that's going to need some debt payments on it in the very near future. And so to my mind, keeping as much in reserve as possible at this moment in time is the most prudent thing to do. I would also note using sort of general funds to pay for stormwater improvements kind of blurs the line between our stormwater fund and our general fund. And I think the idea in setting this up was to sort of have a separate fund and separate funding mechanism to take care of these items. And so I think at least fiscally, it's probably most appropriate to have these items sort of self-funded through the, the fund itself as opposed to using general funds here and there to spill into it. But mostly I think the reason we should not use general funds at this time is I just think there's a lot of risk right now. There's a lot of uncertainty and we're going to have some very big expenses coming up very soon and, you know, our 10 acre site, the market has got a lot of issues right now with all sorts of things. And I think there's just a lot of more uncertainty there would be in ordinary times. And so I would, I would recommend caution as relates to that. With that being said, I think it's probably best if we hear some more from staff. I know you guys are probably very eager to explain and answer some of the questions you've heard. So maybe I'll turn it over to Annie and all of the members of staff on this call. And Wyatt, I don't know if you want to sort of organize their comments, but it'd be great to hear from them.
I, I think a big one to address is just the, the overall approach that the city has been taking on green infrastructure and the role of the, of the stormwater master plan that is really geared in that direction. I think there's might be some helpful things for the council to be aware of, of that body of work and, and how that is sustained by the operating fund now and also how those projects are typically better suited for grants because most of the federal and state money is, is mostly about water quality so far. That could change. But perhaps staff could speak to, to that bit of our, our sort of our policy toolkit that we use on a daily basis.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. And Wyatt, I'm going to jump in real quick before I hand it off to Mike and Andre to talk to your point specifically and more in detail to council's point as a whole. But I do want to start by saying, and specifically to address Councilmember Hardy's points, we are looking at various different tiered structures over 35% impervious rates. We are looking into that. I don't think any of those are necessarily illegal to do as long as they're based in sound engineering judgment. So we're looking into that and when we present the final rate study to council, we will have a lot of that stuff better, better sorted out and better evolved through that process. So that, that will be coming.
And Mr. Bradley, I assume that would be paired with a reassessment of everyone's impervious surfaces since that was last done many years ago now?
Yes, yes, we would have to update that. Currently, our system does not support it as is, so there would be a little bit of rebuilding and tinkering to do that. So it would be very, I, I would say that there's probably about a 99% chance that we'd have to kind of rebuild our map, so to speak. So I think with that, everybody would get reassessed with that, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. And then one point on the memo, I know we gave kind of one very large example. I do want to make a note that whether that is one large project with 350,000 cubic feet of storage or 1,000 very small projects, those are the total numbers to make as big of a difference as the proposed capacity and pipe replacement projects, also known as the, the six priority projects. So just wanted to, to clarify that. We proposed as one big one just so that the magnitude was kind of, I don't know, it was easier to, to kind of approach in that way. And then I also want to make note that the rate study as proposed and as will continue to be proposed, does include out-year projects that are not these six priority projects. Those projects are going to be the upstream retention, detention, green infrastructure and those will be following the watershed management plan that the city adopted back in 2012. So with that, I'll hand it off to Mike Domenica, who can speak much more in depth about several of these items.
You might be muted.
Good point. I sounded very good to myself.
Yeah, we appreciate those comments.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Zach, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Listening to the questions from Mr. Littenhouse onward, this is very encouraging, I have to say just to start because as a bit of background, you all know as well as I did how the task force was formed expeditiously in December to address a critical issue. There were six projects and some smaller ones that were on the front burner. The task force met five times in two, two to three months, two and a half months and did a lot of work with damage surveys and another, a lot of activities to, to dig into those six projects. However, as the deliberations of the task force proceeded, it was very obvious to the members there who were, in many cases of those members engaged in discussions on stormwater and other venues of their lives with DC Water and others, that this was not an either-or dilemma, that we had to do both. The six projects were important and necessary, but that they were not sufficient and that the watershed had to be dealt with, not just for the 10-year storm, but for larger storms going forward. And that the task force report, which is in draft form and staff is reviewing now, has a section in it which is recommendations, which go beyond the recommendations of this priority, the six projects, to exactly what council members have been describing. The absolute need to address other forms of control watershed-wise, why basically green infrastructure integrated into the, the land uses and of the community. It's been understood that that's absolutely critical. The, the thing about the, the six projects is that the both is this hard gray infrastructure, you might say, that has to address the capacity to move the water. The other side of it is the green infrastructure that limits the amount of water coming into the pipes. The pipes that are there now are inadequate. They're aged in many cases, they're inadequate for the capacity. And a good example is probably the Lincoln Street project where there's no storm sewer in Lincoln Street. The houses were built along Lincoln Street with a normal-sized curb with, with no storm sewer in the street. So it's, it's clearly a gray infrastructure issue that has to be addressed. The same thing is true of Trammell Branch, Hillwood, storm sewers and inlets in the street are in adequate capacity for current flows, never mind what we're going to be looking at as climate change continues. So as part of the conclusion of the task force, it was to do these six projects, but at the same time, look at using green infrastructure and getting a commitment, as Mr. Littenhouse said, from the council and from the city and from the residents of the city to implement watershed-wide management planning. It's written in the watershed management plan. The Planning Commission letter distributed tonight makes the same point. It's been said in a number of documents by the city over, over the years and really this is the time to do it. The, the projects as they now stand are in conceptual engineering. There's still plenty of time to modify those designs, to optimize the designs, they were to reduce the cost, but at the same time, we need to be looking at the watersheds for opportunities to reduce the flow. In my thinking, the way to go about it is to use green infrastructure to handle the changes coming about in the future from climate change. The 10-year storm 10 years from now isn't going to be 4.4 inches. It's going to be 5.4 inches. If we can get green infrastructure rolling and put in place, that's the, that's a good target role for that, to get the infrastructure as it currently stands adequate for the 10-year storm and handle any future changes in the watershed through green infrastructure. Second major, I, I think benefit of green infrastructure is the change in the character of the community. It's not just stormwater. It's green. It's, it's, it's values, it's, it's a recreation, it's, it's a quality of life issue that goes with green infrastructure, reflected in stormwater, but in reflected many other things in the community as well. So I, I see this as an opportunity not just to move forward with the projects, which I think Mr. Snyder said very correctly. We need to get designs in place, cost estimates in place and commitment of the city to build the projects to be eligible for the grants. There are grants out there. There's a third way of funding these we haven't really discussed tonight and that's grants in detail. FEMA, DEQ and other agencies are coming forward now, VAMPSA with grant funding for this type of purpose, not water quality, but water quality. So I think by, by moving ahead with these projects, we need to commit to both sides as well as the grant funding. And I think this is a, a very healthy discussion going on right now, in addition to the, to how to pay for it through the, the rate study decisions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Bradley or was it Mr. Prince? Did you have anything to add?
Well, say a pleasant good night to the distinguished members of our council, to you also, Mr. Mayor, to Wyatt Shields, City Manager, and also to my fearless leader, Zach Bradley. So I think actually Zach addressed most of my, my comments. That, that's one of the reasons I put my hand up because I, I wanted to address the first point that Zach mentioned with the total volume, volumetric storage upstream that we also, that was gross, gross volumetric storage, whether placed in one location or placed in several locations or in series. We will still have to come up with that total volumetric storage upstream. And Mike also addressed my second point, which, which I was going to, to, to mention. We, we have to commit to both. It has to be both upstream and downstream, a two-pronged approach because the, because the, the intensity of those storms are just simply increasing. You know, as we, as we speak right now, we are simply on a sliding scale. The, the chances that another event, another 200-year or even greater event may happen is, 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 is much sooner than we think. We, we just don't know. The, the probability of any of these storms occurring exists in every single year. So, and with that being said, even though we are focusing on both ends of the, of the solution, even if we were to install the most efficient upstream strategies right now, we're still going to have waters flowing downstream. And i- if our pipes downstream are not sufficiently sized, we're still going to have flooding issues. So, so to really, to, to, to frame this issue, you know, both sides are important, upstream and downstream, but the priority would still have to be focusing on the downstream, implementing the strategies downstream first. And I think, yes, a commitment needs to be made to both. I agree with that point, but still as a matter of priorities, we need to start addressing our issues downstream or else we're gonna, we're, we're gonna be in the same situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know it's a very complicated issue, so I appreciate all the staff time that's gone into this. Are there other council comments? It looks like Ms. Hardy has her hand. Does you have your hand up, Ms. Hardy?
Yes, thank you. So thank you for talking about more of those upstream projects. I think this is the first time I've heard from staff talk about the thinking beyond the six projects that have been advocated for. So that's reassuring to hear. What is the timeline for those? I know some of those were enumerated in the 2012 watershed plan. What's the timeline for kind of what those projects are going to look like and how much money, I guess, is being contemplated that we'll need to spend for those ones too?
Good evening again. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but the first, I'll refer to it as an upstream project slated for construction in FY '24. And I believe we have around $150,000 or so set aside in that year. And then FY '25 on, does have more money allotted for, for continual projects through, you know, I'm not even going to guess at the year. Mike, if you happen to know that final year off the top of your head, if you want to chime in. But there are, what I will say is there are several years worth of upstream projects in the current rate study.
And have we been doing projects to date, I guess, in that upstream category since the 2012 recommendations?
Yes. All of our stormwater projects to date, with the exception of a couple minor ones, have been some kind of upstream retention, detention or otherwise green infrastructure. These, these six priority projects are really the first true capacity projects that we have done, at least since the 2012 watershed management plan.
And is there, in the plan, is there any discussion around some of the things around enforcement of existing policies or looking at our impervious surface coverage limits? Anything around kind of development and zoning rules, for example?
I will defer to Andre and Mike to, to add their input.
I will say a couple of things to the first question. The, the CIP that was discussed last March, you may have noticed that beyond the six projects, there was additional funding, not just beyond it, but during it, for to be determined projects, understood by the task force to mean not projects like we're looking at right now, but projects that were going to address the, the upstream issues. Because one of the problems we have is when you put water in a pipe, you fool yourself to think it's always going to stay there. These channels are still open channels above the ground. So we have to deal with the watershed, whether we like it or not. And, and those projects that Zach was referring to going on beyond 2026 are basically green, continuation really of green infrastructure projects.
Got it. So going back to, I think, what several of us have asked, which is, we want a commitment to that comprehensive plan. I think the Stormwater Task Force, as we chartered them, have done a really good job with diving deep into the issues, advocating for those six priority projects. What I've heard from several of them is that their scope is pretty limited. They were charged with only looking at those six and clearly we have opportunities upstream. I think we're all finally nodding our heads and saying that both are important. I'm hearing just as many comments about enforcement issues. How many reports have we all individually gotten that redevelopment next door has caused flooding with adjacent neighbors, right? And so And so between that enforcement and then this third prong that I talked about, which is around the funding mechanisms, I would like to see a similar task force, like the stormwater task force, extended, so whether it's the current group, when they sunset, maybe we could extend their scope and their time commitment to actually work on these two latter groups. Because I think it's done a really effective job in advocating for the six. But I believe that commitment comes with advocating for the big picture, too, which I've heard several members have said they're willing to do. So what does staffs take on extending the task force's scope to these upstream and enforcement issues as well?
So this is Wyatt. So one one thought. You know, usually your task force are working on policy issues. And so when you say enforcement issues, I think what you're saying is sort of code issues and policy issues. One thing that I think is worth thinking about is we have the utility commission, which has been defunct since the city sold the water system. And there has been discussion from time to time about reconstituting it with a focus on the sanitary sewer and the stormwater funds. And, you know, there are, there's policy work to be done there. And, you know, the rate issue is one that, you know, that commission is one that that would typically be in the in the wheelhouse of a group like that. So thinking through some of these sort of intractable issues about sort of the balance between regulating land use and property values and, you know, what the state code allows us to do and how much we can do kind of within that parameter, I think that's another policy area that usually has just been directly staff and city council. If the city council chose to, we could have the Public Utilities Commission tackle those types of policy issues as well. The planning commission, I will say, is heavily involved in those land use issues already. So that's one thing to think about.
Yeah, hearing from members of the task force, it sounds like several times they wanted to go there, but they knew their scope was limited to six great infrastructure projects, and they thought there was just as much opportunity, these green infrastructure and then zoning issues as well. I'm curious what others think, too.
I'll make a comment there. As I as I mentioned before, the task force, you're correct, Ms. Hardy, that they did focus on the six projects. But Mr. Gustafson, I sent to Mr. Gustafson this week, who was the chair of the task force, a list of the recommendations that came out of the discussions of the of the task force beyond the six projects. And by and large, they addressed the issues that you've been talking about: enforcement, maintenance, green infrastructure, all of the subjects that go beyond gray pipes in the ground, inlets, and and storm sewers. And I would, will be editing those recommendations over the next few days with the goal of getting them out to Mr. Shields and Zach by Wednesday, Thursday of this week. And I think it'd be good for the council to look at those recommendations and to focus those, edit them, fine tune them, target them at the discussion that's been had tonight with regard to these. I think they're go a long way to meeting those concerns. The task force was focused on the six projects. But if you actually look at the official charter, which was adopted by the task force, there's a third issue, which is the long term watershed management needs of the city with regard to stormwater management and watershed management. And I think that that's exactly what we're talking about here. And I think it's very appropriate to bind these two initiatives together, the gray and the green, as we go forward. So I'll just leave it there. But these recommendations, I think, will be helpful.
All right, thank you. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if I could ask staff, much of what Ms. Hardy talks about in terms of green infrastructure and the other areas that she would like to see progress on, to me, would have to be anchored in what Zach described as rebuilding our map at the local level, so we understand, you know, property by property, what we're up against. So I guess my my question first, and most importantly to staff, is based on resources and staffing that you have now and the work that the task force has done, what is the timeline for that map of rebuilding to occur? Is that a is that a next six month activity? Is that a FY 2021 activity? Is it an FY '24? How far down the road are we before we are able to say with some confidence that, for instance, all the new rebuilds that have been done, or the tear downs and new builds that have been done in the city since pick a date? We've scoped them out. We understand what their runoff situation is. And, you know, we've we've got a basket of things we can do to address any problems we've come across. How how far away are we from being able to know that and do that?
Yes, so that would run through our GIS department with Jeff Rubin. That would very likely be an FY '22 project. In talking to him, he feels that that would take about a month to a month and a half to update and complete. So operating under the assumption that we would present to you the rate study per previous presentations for the FY '22 budget, we would have that updated and that map updated and ready to go for that first billing in December of 2021, which would be the first billing of FY '22. Any any additional costs or anything like that that we can't account for in staff time would be built into that rate study to accommodate whether we needed a consultant, outside resources, whatever it may be. That cost would be factored into the rate study to to account for that. So.
Okay, okay, thank you. And I'll let Ms. Hardy and Mr. Littenhouse speak to whether that's, you know, what they had in mind or not. But before they do, because this goes to Mr. Littenhouse's concern primarily, I think, which is how we finance the work that we do. I mean, for a couple of reasons, I support the alternative route of financing it through surplus money. First, I just I feel, I think the manager is correct that we should have had a Public Utilities Commission, and we should have been meeting about this every month for quite a while now. But that's something that we can address. But I feel that if if we bond this, if we put it to bond and and it lives over there and bond land, that there's just not as much contact as the council should have, needs to have, ought to have on the sort of, you know, week to week, month to month work. It's a little bit like the library project when, you know, Mr. Z insisted that we have, you know, monthly check ins on how the library is doing. I thought that was a good suggestion, help build confidence in the project at a time when, you know, we'd had a little trouble with some of the other projects. I'd like to build that same kind of confidence with the work that we're talking about here. And to me, the best way to do that is to, you know, earmark a certain amount of money from surplus funds for this work. And, you know, we're not going to spend it all the first day, obviously. We're going to spend it over some period of time. And I would like to see council keep a pretty close watch over that. Not that anybody's going to run away with the money, but I think it's up to us to, you know, get down in the weeds on this a little bit more than we have been able to to date, because we've been, you know, busy doing other things. And so for that reason alone, I would like to fund it out of surplus. The other reason to fund it out of surplus is, as the manager pointed out at our last meeting, we are approaching the point where, you know, our per capita debt is a significant number, even for affluent community and a prosperous community and one that will rebuild from the pandemic faster than any community in the Commonwealth, I believe. It's still, it's still a significant per capita debt load that we've taken on for very good reasons, and I've supported all of that. But I do think that we've reached the point now where, if we can, when we do have uncommitted, you know, underspending surplus funds, we ought to try to buy down some of the cost of bonded indebtedness by by using a pay as you go approach. And this this project in particular seems uniquely well equipped for it because, you know, we're only committing to $400,000 at most. We're not committing to the whole $7 million. And the way to communicate that most firmly in my regard, in my mind, is to find it out of surplus and say, look, this is the money we got. This is all we got. And until we wrap everything up together in a bundle that we can understand that includes green and gray infrastructure, we're not going to commit to bonding, you know, $7 million for additional work. So for that reason, the alternative motion is appealing to me. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Littenhouse.
Yeah, Mike, thank you for for those comments. It was enlightening. Frankly, a few of those are the are the first that I think that this collective body heard those thoughts about gray and green together and upstream. But I go back to my my principled stance on this, which is, absent something in writing, an actual plan, right now, we're just talking. And absent of an actual plan of bringing gray and green together, which I like that better than upstream, downstream, absent of that commitment in parallel with these with the planning of these six projects, I'm just not willing to move forward on spending money to design them. Again, I've seen this story before. I do not want it to play out again. I'd like to see a plan, a commitment. And if staff can come back with that commitment, something in writing that goes along, and if that's with Ms. Hardy's recommendation for an expansion of 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 scope or an expansion of of commitment from stormwater, or if that's the Public Utility Commission, if that includes the GIS mapping, if that includes a memo outlining exactly what is going to happen, I just don't want to continue to approve projects and commitments that are going to be shouldered, that burden's going to be shouldered by taxpayers and effectively and potentially sending out a runaway train to to continue to spend money to chase this. So if somebody can clear that up for me, I'm happy to support this. Otherwise, I just, I don't want to do it.
All right. If I could, go ahead, Mayor, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. Please, go ahead.
Just to respond directly to that, I I'm 100% with that comment. The one thought I've had is that, and I'm not exactly sure how this would be done through the city manager's office in the council, but a commitment made as part of this vote for the staff using limited resources from consulting support to come to the council with a plan for the implementation, the the scope methodology and implementation plan for a green infrastructure initiative in within this next six months that we have before we start construction. And I would front load that into the next two or three months to where this this meat put on the bones of what this, what is what we're talking about. A number of cities, many, many cities around the country have do have done this with with widely varying degrees of success. Philadelphia has done it, Portland, Oregon, you've probably heard about some big cities, some little cities. It takes a lot of commitment. It takes persistence and perseverance. It takes an aggressive approach to it. And it takes a sound plan that with the with the the gumption to stick to over time, because the results don't just fall out of the tree and you don't just start reducing flow right away. It's it's a it's a variety of all types of technologies applied all over the watershed. It helps very much to have public relations input to it, because you're changing the way people see their land, their behavior, and and their their infrastructure and their their city. Very beneficial results to that. But nevertheless, that public relations is a big part of it from the top down. So my thinking is that if this was going to go forward, that's the way it would be, is to is a directive from the council to staff, and I'm probably speaking out of place here, but to Department of Public Works staff to put together that that plan and have it fully vetted through staff and through the council over the next few months, so that it goes hand in hand with the engineering implementation of these projects. And in fact, it might be that some of these projects can benefit from immediate additions of 10, 15% green infrastructure themselves. We have a 45% contingency, as you've discussed in these budgets, because of the uncertainty of the conceptual design. I expect that to come down on the gray infrastructure. We can use, if we can use some of that float, that free board, that savings on green infrastructure to enhance the the value of the project. And and there are ways to do that. I could talk for another half hour here about ways we've already seen to do that in these watersheds. So that those are some thoughts, kind of random, but I think it's, I think that's the right direction to go in.
So I'll say, Mike, you know, that that commitment definitely matters. You know, I prefer to see things in in writing. I prefer to see a plan in writing. What I don't want to, what I don't want to do is is ask for that commitment, and then you guys come back in six months, and it's just another ask for a bucket of money to implement some of these these green solutions. And and now we're stuck with, now we're stuck with approving two, two different sources of revenue for for both upstream and downstream and gray and green. In in my mind, the commitment to doing the upstream is is policy and in some cases enforcement, and in some cases, putting pen to paper to figure out smarter ways to manage this, certainly not installing football sized field retention centers. So, you know, if that commitment is to come back with with policy that is that is written, something that is not going to be a huge financial ask, I might I might consider personally voting in this. Maybe it won't make a difference, but it would certainly make me sleep easier tonight. And and I trust that you guys would do that as part of this without actually seeing it in writing tonight. Is that correct?
Wyatt, Zach.
This is Zach. Yeah, this is Zach. And unless unless Wyatt would like to correct me, DPW would be happy to commit to developing that plan and presenting it in the coming months.
Okay, well, I'll leave it to Ms. Hardy, who just raised her hand, to see if, see if that's okay with her.
Thank you.
Before we get to Ms. Hardy, let's go ahead and Mr. Goof's son, Goof's son had his hand up earlier. So Dave, do you want to go ahead and and add some input?
Sure, I'm happy to wait for Councilwoman Hardy.
Go ahead. You were you had your hand up first.
Okay, I would just say, I appreciate all the time that council has dedicated in recent weeks to this important issue. And I really appreciate you raising the the city stormwater needs of Senator Sasselaw and Delegate Simon earlier tonight, too. To Councilwoman Hardy's earlier point about sort of the limited scope of the stormwater task force, that's absolutely right. I mean, we had a very aggressive timeline. We appreciate Councilwoman Hardy and Councilman Littenhouse and Councilman Z and all the effort that they put into putting together the the task force in a very short period of time. And there was a lot of energy, and I think something like 37 people had applied. So there's a lot of good energy right now, a lot of concerned citizens who are eager to jump into whatever comes next from the stormwater task force, be that a resurrection of the Public Utilities Commission. And to Mike put it beautifully earlier, that there are a lot of great ideas that came out of the discussions from all the concerned citizens who are part of the stormwater task force that were eager to put in front of council, a lot of the issues that you all have raised in recent weeks. We all dug into that in the short time that the task force existed from December to March, when when we were able to be together. So we were eager to put finishing touches on that report to council, and we appreciate all your support. And please let us know if there's anything else that we can do. One last point, I would say, to the earlier discussion about the 2012 watershed management plan, much of the work that the city has done Uh, much of the work that the city has done in recent years has been about water quality, and we are absolutely in support of doing what we can to improve the city's stormwater quality. Um, staff would know far, far better than I, than I would about the, uh, the, the city's, uh, recent resume since 2016 about, uh, the water quality issues, uh, that, that, uh, have been addressed from, I think, Pearson Branch, Co-Branch, Daylighting, City Hall Retention, Jesse Thackeray Detention, Nathaniel Retention. I'm sure there, uh, are some others, but, um, so, uh, but right now, uh, so, you know, to the earlier points that yes, this, we would like to both pair the, um, the, the drainage solutions, uh, with, um, with some upstream solutions as well, and I, I think, I think we're all, uh, very much in agreement on that. And I believe the Stormwater Task Force is, is behind you all on that as well.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gusselston, for joining us. So as you said, um, I think we did have a group of superstars on the task force, and you have done a remarkable job advocating for the six. So I think, um, it's certainly been enlightening to hear kind of the upstream, or now we're talking about green and gray paired together as kind of both approaches. Um, I guess I would have preferred seeing this plan before we had the request for six projects, but given what it is, um, if we do resurrect the Public Utilities Commission or rebrand the Stormwater Task Force, I guess what I would like to see as part of that commitment is, because you guys have been so effective on the task force, can you continue by advocating and working on the recommendations for the green infrastructure? The enforcement discussion that we've been having, any zoning recommendations you recommend us taking on? The fee, um, I guess, structure, whether that's a surcharge, whether it's additional stormwater fees for development. Because I think we want to see the kit and caboodle together, and I think I'd love to have citizen input as part of that. And I think by having a task force in there, that, I guess, in some ways holds staffs more accountable because we've put people who are really dedicated to this, and you all clearly have spent a lot of time. So I can get behind this, I guess, if we do commit to either re-standing this up or rebranding you or calling, you know, whatever we'd like. But I think having the citizen thrust behind it is important to me.
Ditto.
All right. Other comments, questions? All right, um, do we have, I guess we've got two different motions we need to make here. Um, is there an order that these motions should be had, Mr. Shields or Ms. Bowa?
Can I raise something, Dave?
Yes.
Um, so I think I heard majority support for the housing amount in the budget amendment, but I did not hear whether we all felt we should debt finance versus, uh, use cash. So I don't know whether we actually need a different motion or whether we should vote as is and see where things stand.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, I, I think that's sort of the rub. As I mentioned before, to my mind, um, we ought to have our cash on hand for things that may occur in these coming months, uh, that we may need, uh, money for, for whatever with COVID or other needs that may arise, given the uncertainty in the markets. And, um, to my mind, that's important to have some powder at hand if need be. Uh, but I do support the affordable housing and the, um, the money for the, uh, storm engineering, um, as well. So I don't know if anybody has a motion, or we do have one, I guess, probably in the staff report. Um, but I, I would support something consistent with what I just outlined, which would be debt financing and the affordable housing in as well, but I, I'm sure others have different ideas. Does someone want to make a motion that we could discuss? Uh, the motion itself, yes.
Mayor Charter, this is Kiran. If I may just, uh, make a quick point before you take your motion, and that is, for the general fund, we are right at about 15% for debt service to expenditure ratio. And our policy, financial policy, um, the old policy was 12%, which was increased up to 15%. Um, and, um, this may take us slightly above it. Um, however, I just wanted that this should be shared with the council prior to your action.
Okay. All right. Well, do we have a motion? I, I presume the, the, um, do we have a motion from someone that, for discussion that someone would like to make?
Sorry, I think Mary Beth, too.
Go ahead.
Which one?
Yeah, either one, either, uh, Mary Beth, Vice Mayor Connolly.
Okay, so I'm looking at the alternative motion, which looks like line 26. My question is this, can, can we discuss bond funding the $400,000 and taking the $100,000 for affordable housing out of the, uh, unex- unspent funds from twi- fiscal year 2020? And I don't know if that is one of these alternative motions. Is that line 26 in the bond resolution, Ms. Bowa? No.
She's on mute right now.
The way that the alternative motion was, that the two were coupled together, they, they could be separated out as two separate issues.
And if we put that, take that $100,000 out of what's being bond-funded, does that keep us below the 15%?
I'm, I'm sorry, could you say that again?
If we're, if we're saying we're going to bond fund, if one of the options is to bond fund $400,000 for the engineering, but not bond fund the $100,000 for the affordable housing, but rather take that out of the unspent funds from fiscal year 2020, does that then, Ms. Bowa, keep us below the 15% where we would like to be?
So with that, we would not be issuing any general fund and we'd be right at 15%. The $400,000 is for the, for, for the Stormwater Fund, um, debt issuance, and, uh, the $100,000 you're saying for the affordable housing unit would come from the fiscal year 20, would be cash funded. So with that option, we would not be issuing any debt for the general fund projects.
So we would be below the 15% or at or below the 15% then?
Yeah, that's correct.
So just to, just to reaffirm what the Vice Mayor just asked, if we were to take the $400,000, debt finance that, that would be debt financed through the Stormwater Fund, and the $100,000 would not come, uh, be any general obligation debt, it would be cash finance, and so that would keep us at or below our target of 15%?
Yes, and we would be within our policy thresholds.
All right. Thank you.
And Ms. Bowa, that's even with knowing that our, um, total operating budget is smaller? So the denominator's smaller?
Yes, that's, uh, knowing that it's smaller, but not knowing what the budget denominator is going to be for next year, so.
All right. Do we have a motion someone would like to make?
Um, Mr. Mayor, um, I'm, I'm trying to figure out where people are. Um, I don't know if you want to do a, a straw poll before we put together a motion or what. I mean, I'm willing to move the, the original motion, uh, where we debt fund the $400,000, but we, um, also allocate $100,000 from the affordable for, uh, we allocate $100,000 to the Affordable Housing Fund, uh, out of the, um, underspending.
Sure, we can do a straw poll if you'd like. Uh, I mean, I would just say I'd support that. What do other folks think?
So essentially, it's taking out and only using number two from the alternative motion or part two?
Right.
And Dave, that doesn't include your, your traffic calming money?
No, well, I'll do that as a friendly amendment. Yeah, I, I, I am convinced that, that the citizens expect us to do a higher level of traffic calming than we've been able to do. And, uh, I would, I would want $100,000 for traffic calming. So in essence, what it, what we've done is we debt-financed the engineering work. We've, um, à la the mayor's comments, we've preserved most of the underfunding, but we've allocated, as I think Councilmember Hardy has mentioned, the $100,000 for affordable housing, and I would add $100,000 for additional traffic calming work. And that will preserve how much of the underfunding? Let me ask, um, uh, Kiran Bowa, how much of the underfunding would remain and be available for, uh, other necessary purposes?
That would leave a balance of $340,000 of the year-end, uh, fiscal year 20-year-end balance.
I support that, Dave Snyder, Councilman Snyder. I support that.
Let me just ask as to Vice Mayor Connolly, who has her hand up, who probably could speak for herself, but as to her earlier question, does that keep us within guidance of borrowing? Um, I presume it does then because we're not doing any more borrowing, Ms. Bowa? That keeps us all within guidelines as well?
That's correct. Yeah, we are cash funding.
Got it. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Um, as much as I love traffic calming, I, I would prefer to put that money into our capital reserves and not into traffic calming because I, we just allocated a lot for traffic calming coming up right now, and that money could be taken out eventually from capital reserves. But I feel like because we don't know what's coming down the pike in the next three months, I'd be much happier to say $400,000 bonded for, uh, the stormwater, $100,000 for affordable housing, and the rest go into capital reserves with an understanding that we all fully support traffic calming, and when the need is there, we will find a way to pay for it. But we already have enough on our staff and enough funding at this point to cover what we already have. So that's my Budget and Finance Committee hat saying, if we could put as much into capital reserve as possible, I would appreciate that.
All right, other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Duncan.
Uh, although I would prefer, as I stated, to draw, uh, all from the, uh, reserve, uh, or the surplus. Um, I would support, uh, where the Vice Mayor's going.
All right, other comments?
Ms. Bowa, just to make sure I've got my numbers right. So from the FY '21 surplus or underspending, as we're calling it, we are spending $150,000 on the George Mason lights, $200,000 on Next Gen 911, and $100,000 affordable housing as proposed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that leaves that balance of 300 to go in reserves?
400, yes. Uh, 440, um, unless you put $100,000 in NTC, and then it becomes 340.
Mr. Shields, do we have projects in the NTC queue that aren't being funded? I know we've had this mandate to clear the queue. Is everything funded?
Mr. Bradley?
Yes, everything is currently funded. So we, we do, uh, we have one new potential, um, uh, project that we were just made aware of by the neighborhood. Uh, for the life of me, you'll have to forgive me, I don't remember which neighborhood it is, but one new potential project that came up with in the last week and a half or so. Um, but we don't have anything new, and, uh, we, every, all the projects are currently funded.
So I'm, how about I just suggest the possibility that, given that all the projects seem to have been funded, that we put that money aside, we put it in capital reserves with the idea that we're going to revisit it, um, let's say, come January. Um, and I think we'll have a better idea fiscally as to how the outcome of this election may impact, uh, local aid to governments and other situations, and there may be more clarity on our budget. But, um, that's something I might just put out for the group to consider is putting in capital, you know, unassigned capital reserves with the idea, we'll take another look at this as we did with the, uh, original, um, traffic calming, uh, over the summer, and then we did revisit it and, and in fact allocated it, uh, you know, this past month or so. But I just wonder if folks have any ideas about that.
Mayor, this is Cindy. May I just make a staff comment to that point?
Yes.
From a, a practical standpoint of implementing the NTC program, that would, uh, be fine from a timing perspective and money availability. We have two community projects out there with community input and voting going on, and then we'll know proceed or not, and then the final costs, and then we can true up the budget. The point that Mr. Bradley just made about a new potential petition has, hasn't fully started the process, and as we know, there's a little bit of time with the community engagement. And so revisiting this in January and/or even concurrent with the next CIP project, process, which will go to the Planning Commission in February, um, I think on a practical basis would work well.
Thank you. Other comments?
So, um, this is Snyder. So let, let me ask another question. If we don't put it in neighborhood traffic calming, but we put it in sidewalks, which I understand is a separate item, uh, do we have the ability to spend the money in a responsible way to improve sidewalks?
I'm going to ask Mr. Bradley to expand upon my comment, but I will note that any of our cost estimates on sidewalks that we've done at a preliminary level with, um, Midvale, Nolan, or South Lee, for example, um, will cost significantly higher than $100,000.
Yes, I would, uh, I would echo what Ms. Mester just said. Um, $100,000 will not go very far for any of the, uh, for lack of better wording, the top identified projects for sidewalks would be. Um, in addition to that, with my appointment to interim director, we do not currently have a transportation engineer on staff, and we are stretched extremely thin in the Transportation Department. Um, so even if we had a project identified, uh, staffing to implement it, uh, would be, um, quite delayed right now.
Okay, other comments? We should try to wrap this up if we can.
So I forget which version of the motion we're on, but I think I support the one that said, we'll put $100,000 affordable housing, $200,000 in Next Gen 911, $150,000 in George Mason lights, and then debt finance $400,000 for stormwater.
Right, I, I think I'll make that motion. Um, with the additional language that will revisit, uh, neighborhood traffic calming, um, at the beginning of next year for a, a potential additional funding.
I can support that.
And that would be my motion.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Um, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
No, sir. And was that Mr. Snyder and Mr. Duncan?
Yes. All right, so no public co- no public comment. Any additional comment from council, or should we go move to a vote?
I was going to say, I don't know whether this needs to just be in the minutes or whether it should show in the motion, but I want to make sure that it's somewhere in there that, uh, there was a commitment to have kind of that green plus gray plan in front of us within several months, um, which involves, I think, the zoning discussion we've had, enforcement issues, fee structures, and then, um, I guess re-chartering the Public Utilities Commission or the Stormwater Task Works, extending their scope and their timelines.
Mr. Shields, I imagine that's duly noted?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, will you call the, uh, vote, please?
Um, can I clarify the motion, just to make sure that I have it? So.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry. So it's, are we at move to grant, first reading to TO 20 dash 22 with the following change, transferring $100,000 to the Affordable Housing Unit Fund and, um, revisiting NTC at the beginning of the year to assess additional funding? Were the other items already in TO 20 dash 22, or did we need to call those out? The.
Yeah, all of the other are already there, so the only thing that is new is, as you stated, transferring 100K to Affordable Housing Fund and the additional note, um, from Councilwoman Snyder.
So that was the correct most motion?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Okay. So are we ready for a roll call?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
All right, the next item. Uh, that was just one of the items, so we have another.
Yeah, we still have TR 20 dash 39 on the table, and that, um, was the public hearing, and that was an advertised public hearing. And we've already been through the one comment we got about stormwater this evening.
Okay. All right, so I'd actually like to take a brief recess if we can. We do have some more matters tonight, and I just think it's appropriate that everybody gets out of their chairs and maybe takes a five-minute break. So are we agreeable with that?
Can we do the bond real fast? Because it's. Budget, let's do 2039.
Yep, let's do that. Sorry. So do we have a motion?
So my motion is to move to adopt TR 20-39. That includes $400,000 for the Stormwater Utility Fund.
All right. Madam Clerk, you said we had no public comment on this matter either?
That's correct.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Brief recess that I just described, if we can, and reconvene in five minutes at 10:13, if that's all right?
This is Cindy, and this is Cindy will confirm with FCC TV for you.
All right, thank you. And thank you to staff for sticking around for this. We appreciate it. And we will reconvene in five minutes. All right, well, thank you all for indulging us on a brief recess. We are back reconvening and on to our next item of business, which deals with the Washington Gas easement. If I don't let the clerk go ahead and call that item. Madam Clerk?
Yes, TR 20-06, Resolution to Approve an Easement for Washington Gas of approximately 2,970 square feet at West End Park and authorize the city manager to execute the deed.
All right, who's doing the staff report on this?
So Sue Long is here to provide the staff report. And we also have a guest from Washington Gas, Warren Decker, who's an engineer with Washington Gas. So we want to thank him for joining us at this meeting tonight. The request before council is to approve an easement of approximately 20 feet by 175 feet in West End Park, where a gas regulator underground vault will be installed, similar to that which is currently at the George Mason High School site. Sue?
Hello again, Mayor Charter, council members. You've seen this staff report before a few times. We had a need to move an existing Washington gas regulator station that's on the site of the old George Mason High School, as Wyatt just said. Over some many months of investigation, it was deemed the best location the city could provide for them was this slice of Washington, or West End Park. Since we last were with you, we did a walkthrough of the park with some of the people who had submitted comments. And we met with the landscape architect and made a couple of adjustments. And I think got some of your questions answered, including how high the plantings are going to be that will be along the wall of the car wash, which I think was your question, Mayor Charter. And those are called bayberry trees, and they are going to be 12 to 15 feet high. So they'll do a good job covering the wall, but they won't be trees. They're still classified as a shrub. But the, we did look at some other options kind of in the interim since we last been with you on this topic. And we're not able to come up with a solution other than this one. So I'm not sure if you want to just ask questions at this point because I don't think anything I've got really is going to be too new, except that Mr. Decker is here from Washington Gas and hopefully can answer any questions if you have them.
All right, thank you very much. And thank you to our guests for sticking with us tonight and being with us here by video. Let's go ahead and open it up to questions and council questions. Is there any questions from council? All right, well, maybe I'll ask if you, we've got Dave Snyder. Mr. Snyder?
Sure, thanks a lot. So I want to review, just underscore a couple of the things staff just said. You've looked at other sites, is that right?
We explored the option, an option of a site, which is, but it's privately held land, and it would be onerous to go down that path, I think, and costly. I don't, to be honest, I wasn't heavily involved in it. But I think there, we did explore that option.
Okay. Secondly, I think you did a walkthrough with the neighborhood. What's been the neighborhood's reaction to these changes that you've made? Do they support the vegetation changes, and where are they right now? Do you know?
Yeah, I got the impression at that walkthrough that people were a little bit surprised in a good way, and what, they hadn't fully understood that we weren't going to just take everything out and not replant. There still will be a good bunch of vegetation in there. It certainly won't look like scorched earth when it's finished. It will have, you know, and some nice new plantings, nice, we're going to, and that will continue to have the pathway, the walkway where it is. And so I got, I came away from that walk thinking they were, if not thrilled, at least, okay.
Okay, and you were able to make some commitments about replantings that weren't entirely clear the first time this came to us. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then finally, I think Mayor Charter, with his usual erudition, asked about the size of the easement at one point. And is this the the necessary size for Washington Gas to do what it needs to do? Could the easement be any smaller?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Decker if I can. He explains it from an, it's his area of expertise.
Yeah, hi. Thank you to the council for having me on tonight. I appreciate the time. So the width of the easement is spelled out in those bullet points you see on the screen. It is already narrower than what we normally would have. It really cannot be made any narrower than what is shown on the plot and what's explained on this page.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those are the questions I had right now. Thanks.
All right, any other questions? I've got a few then. So let me ask you this to maybe Mr. Decker or whoever. For starters, so how long, how wide is your line? Like the actual line itself?
So there are several lines. I don't know what exactly is included in this package. I believe one of the, one of the attachments to this document is the plan view of the piping itself. There is a main line in the piping as well as a bypass. And then there is the outlet piping, which also goes within that easement. So there's three main lines within that easement area.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't know if you understand the sensitivity, but this is one of our parks, and it backs up to a commercial building that's not very attractive and not very park-like, essentially an operating car wash. And so when all the vegetation goes out to put in the line, we're going to have a pretty bare spot for a while. And if we limit what we can put in there in terms of its size, then we may have a bare spot forever. And I just heard, as you did, that, you know, I don't know what that plant is, but some kind of shrub. And so I guess I would ask, for starters, you know, why can't we put something against this wall? I doubt your line is going straight up against the wall anyway. I don't think you guys have put it that close to a common property wall or the footers or whatever next door. Can't we plant something that's going to exceed the height or at least match the height of the building next door, which I'm guessing is one story, but maybe it's 18 feet or something like that? It would be nice to preserve through an evergreen wall the notion that you're in a park. Is that not possible? Is there not some way we can do that with this easement?
Yes, sir. And thank you for the question. Our main concern is not so much with the height of the plants along the wall of that commercial building. It's more the root structure.
Yeah, of course.
Right, those roots can cause additional stresses on our pipes. Not being an expert on shrubs and trees, I can't speak to what sort of shrubs could be put there. But our concern would be the root system involved with.
I got it. And I can't imagine there's not a, like some kind of evergreen, arborvitae or whatever that we can't put up against that wall that's not going to break your cast iron pipes or whatever interfere with your iron gas lines. So I don't know if there's anything you can do to kind of allow us to have a more buffered landscape area. But that's something I would like to see, is not necessarily just a shrub or something that's deciduous, but some kind of, something that can preserve the, you know, green nature of this park. So is that something you can work with us on?
Yes, sir. We'd be happy to look at any proposal from the landscaper or any ideas. We're open to that as long as it doesn't interfere with our infrastructure.
Okay, so Sue and company, Wyatt, can we look at some plants that would fully cover the wall of this building? So it's not bare from parkgoers?
Yeah, what they've proposed is, does get to 15 feet, so they're pretty tall. But we can certainly have them take another look.
Yes, I mean, that's at maximum height. It's a shrub. I don't know how many years and years it's going to take to max out. But I guess I'd like to see something that goes in that's going to not take 20 years to reach full height, and that will be evergreen so that it just preserves the notion that we're in a park.
Yeah.
Also, with respect to this easement, is there the ability to relocate it if need be? If we want to put some improvements in this park? Could Mr. Decker speak to that as far as, if necessary, the relocation of the easement?
We would have to see what the proposed relocation would be. As I think has been discussed in these meetings, there are certain dimensional requirements that go with this. But as long as it fits within those dimensional requirements and the other criteria for relocating this in terms of being within a reasonable vicinity of the main lines, that's something that could be discussed. Yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, I think just in general, the comments that I have and that I think others have expressed and the communities expressed is that, you know, we have a park. It's not real old, but it's established. And we want to preserve what we have there and not rip it out. And I know we're going to plant some new things, which, of course, will take a while to get back the growth that they have already. And we want to make sure that this feels like a park, you know, despite the fact there's three lines going underneath it. If we can't do that, then there has been some notion about putting this elsewhere, such as on the neighboring property, which presents its own issues, but also doesn't impinge our ability to use this as a park or landscape it as we see fit. So I mean, I guess I would just say it doesn't sound like this is optimal, but it doesn't sound like anything's optimal. So I appreciate the comments we've just heard. And I would ask that we work to get, you know, the densest landscaping we can in that area so it grows back quickly and also preserves the view without looking at the car wash from inside the park. But I think that's all I've got. Does anyone else have anything? Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
No, we didn't receive any this evening.
All right, do we have a motion then? All right, it could be a long evening, Mr. Decker. And I used to tuck around for a while. It may take you a while longer. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
I'm looking for the language. I did not print that part out, so.
I've got it. Mayor, I move to adopt TR, actually, no, I don't, sorry.
I believe I have it up on the screen.
Oh, got it. TR 20-06.
Second.
All right, unless there's any further comment, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mr. Decker, for sticking around, and we appreciate your continuing cooperation.
Thank you for having me.
Uh huh, take care. All right, the next item, Madam Clerk?
We have TR 20-40, Resolution to Approve receipt of Community Development Block Grant CDBG CARES Act COVID-19 related funds and authorize the city manager to execute an updated program agreement with Arlington County and execute a CDBG grantee sub-recipient agreement to grant those funds to Falls Church Community Services Council to be used for emergency rent assistance.
All right, Mr. Shield, Ms. Lewis?
Ms. Lewis is on the line.
All right, Ms. Lewis, welcome.
Welcome, I mean, hello.
All right, that's good. Well, welcome's fine, too. Thanks for joining us and sticking around. We appreciate it. Why don't you give us the quick version of what this is all about?
Good evening. So this is basically good news. This is our second round of CDBG CARES Act funding that we are receiving. The first round was for $39,000. Let's see the exact amount was, I can't seem to adjust this to go down. It's basically around $39,000. Oh, nine, five. And so with that first round, the Housing Commission voted to have, by sub-recipient agreement, give those funds to the Community Services Council, the Falls Church Community Services Council, to use for rental assistance for persons at low and moderate incomes. Because as you all are aware, that is by far our highest COVID need in the city, is rental assistance. That's the largest request we receive. We're currently serving around 57 people with rent right now. And so this is a second round CDBG funding that will go into FY 2021. And this, the Housing Commission just met October 13th, and they voted to also give these funds, the $63,530, to the Community Services Council to continue to provide rent. We will have until June 30th, 2021, to spend those funds. And so that is basically what this is, is just allowing the city to receive the funds and add it to our existing contract with Arlington County. And then by sub-recipient agreement, give the funds to the Falls Church Community Services Council to use for rent to pay for people affected by COVID. That's in a nutshell.
All right, well, thank you. We appreciate it. Let's go ahead and open it up to questions or comments. Questions, comments? Seems pretty straightforward, but are there any questions or comments from council? Madam Clerk, is there any public comment about this issue?
There is not.
All right, unless there is any comment, does anyone want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt TR 20-40.
Second.
All right, and is that Ms. Hardy on the second?
Yes.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lewis. We appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Shields, is there anything you want to tell us about this?
There's just two items on the consent calendar. And the first is approval of a contract for third-party plan review that will help the city permits function surge up for major projects. projects as they come through our process. And the second is a contract with Carousel Industries for Next Gen 911 in the amount of $213,000. The first contract was in the amount of $100,000.
All right, thank you very much. Does anyone want to make a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Mayor, move to adopt the consent agenda.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hardy on the second, Madam Clerk?
And I will note, there's also an appointment on the consent calendar.
All right, you are factored, that's right.
Okay. Are we ready?
Thank you.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero, thank you.
Thank you very much, let's move on to business not on the agenda. Approval of minutes, those are from February 10th, 2020. Eagle Eye Duncan, any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I sent my comments to the clerk yesterday, and she said she would incorporate them, so I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts or comments that she heard from, but if not, I would move for adoption of the minutes as revised for the meeting of February 10th, 2020.
All right, any other comments on those minutes? Do we have a second? We're going to do all these by roll call, given the virtual nature of them, so, do we have a second on Mr. Duncan's motion?
Second.
Vice Mayor Conley on the second, Madam Clerk?
I should say that my comments were purely on typographical matters, nothing substantive.
Duly noted. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, and let's move on to standing regional committee or council liaison reports. Anyone have any reports they'd like to give to council about some of the work they're doing? All right, how about other council member comments?
I have one comment, Mayor.
Yes, please.
That is that welcoming Falls Church, after their welcoming week, announced an all-community read of the book Refugee by Alan Grass, and there's going to be a presentation Wednesday afternoon at 4:00 PM. Mr. Grass is teaching with students, that's Mary Ellen Hederson and George Mason and Tom Jefferson, and that will be played for the community at 4:00 bucks after noon. If you haven't read the book, I highly recommend it, but even if you haven't read the book, check out the, it's going to be on the FCC TV YouTube channel, and it's a great book about refugee, great story.
All right, thank you for the recommendation and the information. Any other council member comments? All right, I think that's all we've got as far as comments go. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to say before we adjourn?
So our next meeting is not next Monday, but Monday after that, correct?
That's right.
And we're not having a mayor's meeting for scheduling this week because we're not having a meeting next week, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
All right, everyone, get out and vote, let's have 100% voter turnout here in Falls Church, we can do it.
Woo-hoo!
Yeah. All right, anything else anybody wants to say, or do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All right, do we have a second on that?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, let's do it, we're adjourned.